Hello.
Hello ladies.
Hello.
Hello.
How you feeling Tracy?
Oh, I'm feeling great.
Good, good, good.
I'm gonna eat in front of everybody tonight too.
So Richard sent me his application as well.
Oh bitch.
Did you get back to George about not needing signatures and to just turn in his application or?
I did, I did.
Good.
So Richard sent it to you, that's good.
Yes, he sent it to the, through the elections email, so someone used it correctly. Alright, I really hope everyone is on time and we get started really quickly here.
Hey, do you know why it says Teodoro instead of Teddy? I'm like signed up as Teddy. Everywhere else it says Teddy.
Go, yeah, I don't know, it could just be pulling it from the email, but I don't.
I have, I've been wondering that and I checked my Cisco, like I've not signed up with that as that anywhere. So I don't know if you guys are changing it.
No.
Citrix knows.
Anything, sorry. But you should be able to change your name.
I can't. If you can change it for me, that would be great.
Okay. I don't think I can because I'm not a host.
Hey George.
If you could change it, that would be great.
George, are you gonna send me your application tonight?
I thought I, I thought I sent it yesterday.
Uh, I don't have it.
I was at my SIM file, hang on, I'll blast it again.
Okay, thank you.
I can't, let me see here.
Yep.
Yep.
Let's give you what's happened. What the hell?
Craig.
Okay, you hear, is my audio working?
Yeah.
Cool, I'm mute myself.
Why do I have this? Um. I don't know, Tracy or Anthony, do you guys know how to change names of people?
I'm gonna try.
Okay, I'll try to help you out Teddy.
Appreciate that.
So Teddy, do you have, in the, in your, in the corner of your thing, in the little like ellipses, do you have anything there that says like?
No, usually I do and it doesn't give me the options. Even in my more options. Not a big deal, I just thought it was something that, and it's not related to my email or anything, so I just wanted to ask. Not a big deal, but.
I'll, I'll chat, I'll, I'll confirm it, I'll send you a chat when I confirm I changed it.
Yeah, because I can't, I can't figure it out either and I'm a co-host, so I don't, it didn't new.
All good.
Alright.
Okay, how many people do we got? Two, three, four.
I don't think we have one, a quorum yet.
No, okay. Welcome Newman.
Newman's here.
Right, we've missed you.
Four, five, six, we have seven people.
Lisa's here from the planning department, hi Lisa. Welcome Mayor Gloria.
Hey, well that's exciting.
Yeah, thanks so much for joining us, that is, I do have some changes to the agenda, so Mayor Gloria and also Assembly Member Ward will both be joining us tonight to give us an update. So they'll be taking over their staff's report otherwise. And then it, I did have a misprint in agenda as well of what we, what we're paying back Anthony. So it should have been fourteen ninety-five a month for a total of, I think, one oh four sixty-five. So I just have those two amendments and otherwise. I would want to accept the rest of the agenda. Once we get more people.
Who's coming in, let's see.
We got Kevin now.
Kevin is in. I feel like I'm in romper room most of the time. I don't, you guys, mostly you guys are probably too young to know what romper room was. I see.
I see Anthony. Okay, awesome. Are we just missing the Goranskis?
I have, do you have Chris?
Chris is here, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Jenna?
There's a phone number there.
And Richard?
And Richard, yeah.
Yeah, so those are it. Goranskis, Richard and Jenna.
Okay. Well.
We have quorum.
We have a quorum, so why don't we go ahead and get started so we can, you know, give, we have Mayor Gloria until six thirty. So want to make sure any and all questions can get answered. Cool, so do I have a motion to accept the agenda? I know there's a lot on the consent agenda as well. And so if you do, again, if anyone wants to pull anything off, you can, oh, good, Nicole's here too. Newman, are you making a motion to accept it? Awesome. And then Kevin, was that a second or do you have something you want to pull?
Of course he's not going to.
I would pull the, the fraud street portion off and leave, I'll leave it to you where you want to stick that on the regular, the full agenda.
Alright, a little go at the end.
Okay. So Newman made a motion to accept the agenda, right?
Uh, yes, but Kevin, with fraud street pulled off.
Okay.
Do I have a second? Can't say it, thank you.
Anthony a second.
Thank you. Okay, all, so Tracy, will you call the roll, so?
Sure.
Because it is consent and I want to make sure we get a bunch of stuff.
Anthony?
Yes.
Andrea?
Uh, yes.
Is Andrew here yet?
Yes, and yes.
Yes and yes. Chris? Craig?
Yes, and yes, and Anthony, I can get you, I can get you your money whenever it's convenient for you on the reimbursement.
George?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, is Jane here yet? Nope, Jenna?
And yes.
Thank you. Kevin?
Phone number.
Yes, Nicole?
Yes.
I see your lips move. Newman?
Hello.
Hello. Is that a yes? Okay. Is Richard here yet?
Uh, I am here, Roger that.
Alright, cool. Uh, Tom not here, I say yes, and Virginia?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, the Goranskis are here?
Yeah.
Oh, awesome. Alright, cool. We have a full meeting. Okay. Minutes. You're muted.
Do we have a motion to accept the minutes or are there any changes to the minutes for last month?
I motion to approve them, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, Jane.
Thank you Jane. Is there anyone opposed? We don't have to do a full roll call. Okay, awesome. So with that, like I said, Mayor Gloria has so graciously come to talk with us today and he's giving us thirty minutes of his time, I know packed schedule. I'll let you just hop onto it and then we will have time for questions after that.
Andrea, thank you so much and you're, you're so gracious to say like, I'm giving you some of my time, but I work for you guys. So thank you for the time that you volunteer to support your community and I would want to be here as an effort to try, try and stay in touch. You know, this is a, this job can be a bit of a bubble, so I'm gonna do my best to stay out of it and be in touch. You all have the best of the best in Coda from my office. He and I have been working together for two years from now or so. So we gave you some VIP treatment by assigning him to your neighborhood. He will be at these meetings, but I'll do my best to come by every now and again. I want to maybe give Coda the night off a little bit, maybe answer or go through a couple of things that's going on and then leave time for questions. I know that Assembly Member Ward may be joining us and I believe if my memory serves me having done that job, he's in Sacramento today. So I will make sure that we honor his time as well. So the city, first off, thanks for the job, I appreciate it, I'm enjoying it despite the circumstances. And we have certainly a lot on our plate. I think first and foremost is COVID nineteen. I recognize you all are a planning group, but you're also human beings in the world and I'm sure this is on your mind. I'm really happy to tell you that last week, the state of California authorized the city to begin receiving vaccine doses. And then as of yesterday, we actually began to start administering them. Previous to yesterday, we were simply in an assistive role with the county, so a lot of our EMTs and firefighters have, and lifeguards have been administering vaccinations at PECO. We're doing about five thousand a day there. We now have the ability to provide them directly ourselves. We have a very small apportionment. But I'm here to tell you that they gave us twelve hundred total and we got, we promised three hundred yesterday, we did three hundred and two. Here's my goal. My goal is to make sure that I show that we are super responsible with the doses that we are given in order to get more. And if we can do that, we will do our level best to look around and be assistive to the county. The county, as you all may know, has four super stations across the county with, along with a number of other smaller stations. We want to find the gaps in those service, we want to find those harder to reach populations. We want to try and prioritize our teachers so the schools can reopen sooner rather than later. So this is the assistive and sort of backup role we're trying to play, given that we have EMTs and paramedics who are capable of vaccinating people. Given that we have the facilities and the infrastructure to be able to do this. And given now that I think as of tonight, we'll probably have done about six hundred plus people. And as well as about sixty plus who are currently living at our convention center homeless shelter. I think many of you know, if you're living in a concrete setting with a thousand people, that's a high risk population. And so being able to vaccinate those folks, we're trying to just knock this down piece by piece so that we can get back to some level of normalcy. So we will continue to do what we're doing, wish me luck to make sure we continue to manage, meet all the state's expectations and that we can get more. Again, if we're able to do that, my hope is that we could have more sites around the community. I will tell you just very transparently, we've been in communication with SeaWorld, they obviously have a large parking lot, they obviously have the ability to host a lot of events. And while they've reopened in a modified fashion, there is still space that are there. So in terms of places that we're currently exploring, that's one I know is relatively close to your community. I'll keep you posted. If we get the supply, we will go out there and hustle it. You can't talk about COVID without talking about the economy. Obviously, our small businesses are hurting. Obviously, last week, we went into the purple tier status, so you can see outdoor dining. I got my haircut on Saturday, I'm the happiest guy on earth. We're continuing to look in that general direction, but you know, we have launched a small shop local SD campaign to try and encourage San Diegans as they're consuming, to try and keep that local. I think OB knows better than most how important small local businesses are in our community. I would encourage you to do what you can. We are launching a website relatively soon in conjunction with some of our partners at the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Corporation to make it easier for you to do that. I think most of you know what's in your neighborhood, but maybe if you can't find what you need in your neighborhood, you could find something else that perhaps in Port Boma, Midway area, etc. So we're just trying to make it as easy as possible and I won't lie, the more you buy local, the more that tax revenue stays here in the city, which is good for the city. Because I do want to give you the flip side of the bad side, as much as businesses are hurting, the city is hurting fairly significantly as well. With very few people traveling, our tourism taxes are far below what was expected. And so we have a massive budget deficit, not just in next year's budget, which starts on July the first, but in this year's current budget. I want to be really clear, it's not about overspending. Our city staff is within three hundred thousand dollars out of our one point five billion dollar budget. We're within three hundred thousand dollars of actuals versus our budgeted expenditures, so it's not overspending. It's about the fact that basically our revenues are roughly eighty million less than what we anticipated. Eighty million by, by order of magnitude is not quite double what we spent to run the library system last year. So this is big stuff, you guys, this is very, very big stuff. If you're praying people, or even if you're not, please pray for additional federal relief. If the federal government is able to pass additional economic stimulus like they did last year, we would probably have enough funding to be able to take care of business for this year and hopefully get the economy back going again. If we don't, we are going to be facing fairly significant budget reductions. And I know that as a planning group, you all care deeply about your neighborhood, it's very difficult to close an eighty-four million dollar mid-year gap or one hundred and fifty million dollar fiscal year twenty-two gap without cutting neighborhood services. Our goal, of course, is to do as little as possible that you'll ever feel or see, but it is nearly impossible to do that with the numbers that we're dealing with. So again, extreme hope that we can get some assistance from the federal government. I know that our Congressman Scott Peters is fully supportive of this. If you happen to have a, an in-law or an ex-spouse or somebody who's serving in Congress, please tell them to pass the President's economic stimulus proposal. This would have direct benefit to what we're doing and connecting what I first, the first thing with the second thing. Our EMTs, our paramedics, they're out there giving those doses right now, that's money out of the city's general fund that we're spending. It would certainly be nice to get some of that money back. There are a host of other issues, but again, I want to be mindful of time and of, of the fact that our Assembly Member is now present and I think I recognize that decor that he's in. We swap living situations. But I just want to wrap up with some community specific concerns that I know are on your guys' mind. With regard to the vending ordinance, I know that many of you had a meeting with Council President Campbell's office, some of my staff was present for that as well. We are in the process of taking community stakeholder input, I think many of you know. I know that OB has been very outspoken about wanting regulation of this, I want regulation of this as well. I think you may know that there are differing opinions on this matter and so we're trying to solicit input in order to get at least some sort of a compromise where we can get some rules on the books. I would much prefer to get something on the books, allow us to enforce and then make course corrections going forward. That's kind of the mindset we're at right now. My goal is that we be able to have something before the city council within the next sixty days or so. So we're trying our very best to prioritize this in response to yours and other communities' desires for more, some more action. I know short-term vacation rentals are always an issue in the peninsula communities and OB. Council President Campbell is, is the lead on that and so we're watching her efforts in that regard. You might ask her office for an update on that. And lastly, with the OB pier, when the fire department sent me the photos of the destruction to the pier, it's so heartbreaking. And I know you all know that better than most because you can see it every single day. To be candid, we have not had an opportunity to do the full analysis of what is going to be necessary to repair that thing. I've heard the calls from the community, don't do minor fixes, make sure that it can withstand the next king tides. I hear you, it's expensive, both the analysis of what it's going to take plus the repairs. I've just told you what our city's budget situation is, but I understand that I'm aware of the situation, we are working actively on it. And when we can give you some more specifics, other than we're aware of the issue and we're working on it, we'll, Coda or I will be back to give you that update. So those were some OB specific issues I was aware of that I wanted to just frontload and then Andrea, if I can throw it back to you, I'm happy to take any questions for the time that's remaining. To just try and respect your time and your agenda as well.
Yeah, thank you so much. That was really quick and super informative. I'm, I'm gonna ask everyone to utilize the raise hand function if you want to ask a question. If you hover over your name under the participants list, you'll see a hand pop up, so that will be the best way to triage this. I'll go ahead and start, so because this is a planning group, we run into some trouble with just the planning department. When plans come forward, there seems to be some confusion over, you know, the city's whole code and then the coastal specific codes. Would there be, or do you have any plans to, you know, maybe possibly pull out the coastal code so it's just a little bit more clear? Where, you know, planners should be looking when they're reviewing plans or do you have any real plans to, I guess, make any changes to the planning department and development services?
Um, yes, I mean, our hope is to, let me take a step back. I think both of those departments maybe isn't so readily apparent, although as a planning group, you might get this better than most. I see them as being critical for our economic recovery. Most small businesses interface with development services, a lot of construction and other projects have to go through planning and through development services. So if that, of those two departments are not firing on all cylinders, it's going to hamper our ability to get people back to work, get our economy going again. Get some of those dollars in the treasury so that we can restore library hours, etc. So macro, yes, we need to make some modifications there. Those modifications though come up against that budget issue and so it's a bit of a back and forth. Andrea, if I may, I think I know what you're talking about, but if we can maybe follow up with you to understand better so that we can target specifically with Mike Hansen, as the director of the planning department. I want to make sure that we're addressing those right things. Again, we're going to be making some modifications. If we can do that in a way that accommodates the concern that you have, fantastic. If we can, I want to be transparent with you and make sure that you know what we're doing and that's why we wouldn't be able to accommodate that. But I, I do agree with you, there's a, there's a often a lack of coordination that causes additional expense and time. And right now with unemployment at ten plus percent, we don't have time for that, right? That we have to be as nimble as possible to help businesses and communities recover.
Yeah, no, getting a coastal development enforcement is a pretty long and arduous process, so, you know, helping everyone out here would be great. I see Kevin's hand up, so I'm gonna toss it.
As Coda, I saw him taking notes, but.
Yeah.
With Andrea, that'd be great. Fantastic.
Hi, hopefully my audio is better than my video, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to speak a tiny bit about the short-term rental issue. It's coming up later in our meeting and this is sort of our last hurrah to really put together something. But I just wanted to mention it, you know, it is really, you're, you're the lead on this, it's your pen that signs this paper. And so I, the efforts by Campbell have left a lot of the community groups in the dust. You know, we're not the only ones that have felt that way. You know, it's really an effort of some, some special interest groups have assembled this proposal and she's just ran with that. And so we're going to be reaching out to you directly to try to advocate for some of these positions that we feel we've just really been left out on, on. I'm sure Teddy here will, reps, Jen will disagree with me on that, but, so stay tuned on that. I know this is, you've been around the block on this issue, so, you know, we're going to try to advocate to you directly as well as, you know, get whatever we can from, from council to steer that issue.
Yeah, Kevin, I appreciate that and well aware, I would love to see, you know, what modifications you have. I have, other communities have been in communication with my office, we've been sharing that with the council president as she works on her proposal. I'll tell you where I'm spending my time right now because this is where I think I can be the most value add and this goes a little bit back to Andrea's comment or question. If something is adopted, it's going to fall to me and my team to enforce it. And I think regardless of what percentage or what zone or planning group or whatever your issue is, whatever gets adopted, we have to be able to hold people accountable, right? For neighborhood nuisance and quality of life concerns. My focus right now is making sure that whatever gets adopted, that we can actually implement it and that it's not a false promise to you all. I think the council president understandably wants to regulate this, but as the regulator, I need to be in a position to be able to stand next to her and say, or in the council, whoever votes or doesn't. Again, this is assuming something's passed, that we can actually enforce upon that matter. So that's where a lot of my time and focus is, to make sure that we can do whatever the council asks us to do. But I do welcome your input and we're making sure that the decision makers, at least the legislators, are aware of those things and as they work and craft a compromise or not. Lord knows more often than not, the council's been incapable of doing that. I'm hopeful we do get something passed though. And much like with the streetcar vending, you know, if we don't get it right, you have my commitment to try and bring it back again and, and make sure there's modifications. I've never seen an ordinance be perfect on day one, I think Assembly Member Ward can relate to that, there's always a give and take that comes. What I want you to hear from me is that I will be laser focused on implementation enforcement and I will make sure that we are transparent on how it's going so that we can make modifications going forward. So that this is not something that just gets shoved off the agenda for next twenty years and you have to live with it. If we have to make some modifications, we will do that.
Thank you.
Thanks Kevin, I see Chris's hand up and then I also saw Craig physically raise his hand, so I'm gonna go to those two. We have a few minutes left and DK, I see yours, so you'll be after Craig if we get to it.
Thanks Andrea, congratulations to Team Gloria and welcome aboard. Really glad to see you at this meeting, Coda. Really pleased to see you at the last meeting, I think we commented on that. I'll try to be as accelerated in my comments and questions as, as you were Mr. Mayor. I don't know how you got through all that, it didn't even seem like you had a script, so that was a, a great start. Look, having a chance to review your back-to-work San Diego plan, I'm really pleased to see some inclusion of efforts for arts and culture in this region. That's something I support through my work at the airport and the San Diego Regional Arts and Culture Coalition, as well as the work on this board. So let's keep that moving forward. And as it relates to this board, to echo kind of the comments that were alluded to earlier. I think a greater collaboration with the planning, the development services department would be really well received. So whatever you can do to help that, I would support.
Very economical with those comments, that's great. Thank you.
Craig, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, congratulations on your sentencing to the. I wanted to just follow up and amplify Kevin's con, comments on the STVR issue. Mayor, please consider advocating with the legislators on the council for a distance restriction. Because as I just heard you say that you want something enforceable. The most simple and efficient way to be able to enforce a limit on the number of resident, of short-term visitor accommodations in residential zones. Will to have, will to be to have a distance restriction between them. City has software to accommodate that, which is already in use for other purposes. It's just the most efficient way to go about that, but it seems like it's gotten very little traction, especially with platforms. So I would urge you to take a really hard look at that, have your staff who are advising you on this, take a really hard look at that. And consider advocating with the council members on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you Craig.
Great, so I'm sorry DK, but I did see Andrew's hand. I'm sorry, I'm going to defer to my board members and then hopefully we can still get to your question. Andrew?
Thank you Andrea. Mayor Gloria, thank you to you and your team, everybody's been great to work with since the transition. And we, I know the board and many of us as citizens just look forward to working with you and your team in the future. I know Chris had mentioned it a little bit, but it's nice to know or reference it, I think, of this board. We are a little bit more arts and culture heavy than probably many other boards. And that we just really support and value your input and ideas on supporting the arts and culture. And I've seen your, the blueprint and so I hope going forward that that's something that you can just continue to think about and support. And just remember that that's definitely something that'll help move us through, you know, building back past COVID. And I know that we want to prioritize that amongst the shortfall of funding, but I think arts and cultural programs and outreach will help bring visitors back, bring money back to the community. And so just, you know, just to, we can continue to, to focus on those efforts in the future.
Andrea, I appreciate that. I'll be really quick and just respond as soon as we get to DK. Yeah, two things I would just say. Number one, I want to, you need to hear explicitly from me, arts aren't elective, right? And so in dealing with a massive budget shortfall, I, that can sometimes be translated as the arts are going to be obliterated. You know, undoubtedly, everyone's going to take a cut of some kind, but I want you to just know that this is a different administration, our orientation to this issue is different. And I'm gonna do my level best to make sure that we're continuing to make a commitment in this space. The second thing I want to tell you is when you'll often hear me say, we're focused on the hospitality industry, the ones who are hit the hardest and will take the longest to get recovered. I would put the, the arts and culture community in that same bucket of folks. Obviously, if you haven't had a performance in a year, if you haven't been working, you know, this is a, this is a community that when we're talking about restaurateurs and hoteliers. It may sometimes go unsaid and that's a bad on me, maybe I can do better by that, but understand that in my mind, it's inclusive of the performing arts and arts and culture. I fear for how long it's going to take this part of our economy and this part of our community to recover. And as a consequence, you know, equity being the lens of this administration, that's where we have to spend more time. So just, just to put that out there and be really explicit about it.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Okay, DK, looks like you can.
Awesome, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak here. Congratulations, Mayor Gloria. Just briefly, you know, obviously I'm a neighbor here to Ocean Beach I live in and serve on the Midway Community Planning Group. I see Mandy from Peninsula as well. One of the questions that comes up quite a bit when we talk about community planning groups in particular is sort of the, the results of the audit and the grandeur and some of those things that happened over the last couple of years. I know the city attorney, I think in November, put out a memo with some recommendations. I just wanted to get a sense from, from, from you directly as to what your awareness is with regarding to those recommendations and potentially maybe even some of your intent. Because as I understand it, sort of the direction and outcome from those recommendations from her memo will go a long way towards establishing what community planning groups are capable of going further forward.
Yes, definitely aware of those and other groups' recommendations for planning groups. Let me just say from the jump, I think planning groups are good things. I've spent twenty years of my life in them, so I've shown that by my presence and, but I, I recognize they can get better. And I recognize particularly in the context of this venue, right? That this has been both helpful, but it also poses other challenges. That this has been both helpful, but it also poses other challenges hence the reimbursement to Anthony, which I'm glad he's gonna get his money. So there are some modifications that are necessary. I think we have a couple of council members who want to be the initiative owners for that. And that's great. You know, I'm happy to see them do that. And so I would stay tuned on that. Just I think what I can tell you tonight is that that issue is not just going to get lost in the shuffle. There are people who are passionate about working on this. And I think you'll start hearing some stuff from on that relatively soon.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Tracy, did you mean to raise your hand?
I kind of did, and then I kind of didn't. You know, like a couple of people, like Andrew has said, our board is very arts and culture heavy. We definitely, we have three people who are involved in the arts and culture sector. Chris, Andrew and myself. And then Nicole is a fabulous graphic designer. And I mean, I know a number of people on this board are very creative as well. So the one thing I want to say, and it has absolutely nothing to do with this board, but I would really like to have a shout out for the arts and culture staff because the commission staff is amazing. As a commissioner, I don't think I've ever worked with a city department or commission that has been as amazing as they are. And I mean, if we could multiply them and get them all throughout the city, it would be a great boon for the city. But I just wanted to put that out there that Jonathan and his team are some of the hardest working people that I've ever worked with in the city, and I really appreciate them. So that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And that's actually a good note to end on. And if I can, I'll toss it to Chris Ward if that's what it is. But I appreciate you saying that. I am aware of the quality of individuals we have at the Arts and Culture Commission. But I want you to know that this is indicative of our workforce in general. And just a quick venue that, you know, we got that notice that the city was able to receive vaccine doses. I think it was last late Friday. I happened, I knew that we'd already stand because I'm planning and wanting to do so well that we get more, right? So we'd already identified the municipal gym in Balboa Park as being where we wanted to perform the vaccinations. Because I'm a busybody, I went to the mini gym early on Sunday morning, unannounced, no police officers, none of that stuff, just to go. And I just saw all of our city employees there on a Sunday morning, early crack of dawn, doing the work so that on Tuesday morning, we could open the doors. And when I went there yesterday and I saw the IT people, the facilities people, the park and rec people, special events, PD, lifeguard, everyone's there, and they all are doing their part. And then you see these elderly people who are getting vaccinated and have a sense that they're going to be able to live, right? That's what our team does so often. And I share that with you because you had a positive experience with arts and culture. I had that experience. I won't, I will admit to being a little misty eyed and watching that all happen. But I'm telling you that as hard as this budget's going to be, there will be impacts on city employees. And I ask you to keep that in mind. And probably more importantly, when we're back in a positive position, I ask for your advocacy for better pay and benefits for our employees. Because one of the easiest things I hear from folks is that they're a bunch of blah, 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 blah. It's not true. If you talk to the painter who was away from his kid on Sunday morning, making sure that the ramps at that mini gym were ADA accessible, you'd recognize no one's here to get rich. Everyone's here to serve. We have incredible people. It sounds like you know that. But I could use public support for recognizing that we continue to underpay our employees. And as a consequence, they stay with us for a few years, and then eventually they leave public service, which is regrettable. So thank you for letting me proselytize a little bit about public service. I am a missionary for public service. I believe passionately in what I get to do. I know Chris Ward feels the same way. And I'll tell you, I am damn impressed by what people are willing to do. And literally 600 people probably today now have the vaccine that wouldn't have had it if those folks weren't working early on a Sunday morning. And they do that for you because they believe passionately in serving the city. So thanks for that. Let me give you that sermon. Let me kick it over to someone I know is also equally passionate about public service. And I'm so grateful. He is in the legislature right now. This is a heck of a time to be in state government. But he's doing a great job. Assembly Member Chris Ward, can you take it away?
Thank you, Mayor Gloria. Really good to be with you all. Gosh, that really touches me because I can tell you how much I do miss serving in City Hall and all of our great city employees as well. But it is a pleasure to be with you and thank you for just a couple of minutes of your time. Probably slightly less interesting to you to talk about state business because so much of what you do endure and what you need directly engages first with City Hall. But I first and foremost wanted to get a chance to engage with you now that I am on deck and into my second month as your State Assembly Member for Ocean Beach. And thank you, Andrea and everybody for the time to be on your agenda briefly tonight. I wanted to introduce before I forgot, Ansermio Estrada, who's on the call. He's going to put his information in the chat right now. So Ansermio is my district director. We are going through what Todd Hinton toured actually four years ago. The assembly is a little quirky about how they give you some budget and they let you staff up. So we're working on trying to get to a full complement of staff right now. But he will be your point of contact for Ocean Beach until we're able to communicate otherwise. But in the meantime, of course, there's a lot of stress. There's a lot of need out there right now. The things that we're dealing with are the things that you're obviously seeing in the media and probably many you and your neighbors are enduring as well. Making sure that we're getting that unemployment out unimpeded. We've been kind of caught between the abuse that we've seen and some of the challenges we've seen with the system and also making sure that and the fraud to be, to be more blunt. And making sure that we're actually getting all of our funds out there that are lawfully endured to that are really needed by many of our community members who have been suffering from this pandemic for far too long. We're also in this kind of go between between a lot of our challenges with vaccination. I want to give a huge shout out to the County of San Diego that not only really turned a corner about three or four weeks ago. And as Todd mentioned, you know, created these super centers to be able to come in there and really work out the kinks and make sure that on the backend that we were getting shots in arms, that we were working on delivery a lot better. But really trying to make sure that we're advocating more, that we're getting whatever supply is available to California. We're getting San Diego's fair share. I think you all know when we had a change of administration in Washington DC on January 20th, we came to learn that there was no national stockpile. We are working overtime to make sure that we are getting as much as possible. And of course, we're all reading the news about additional vaccines from other companies as well that are about to start to feed into that pipeline and get that here. So again, thanks so much to the county employees and the coordinating effort that's down there. If you haven't already heard about MyTurn, so it's myturn.ca.gov. Because one of the biggest questions out there is, you know, when is my tier coming up? When is my turn? That is a way, County of San Diego actually got one of the two pilot counties to be able to utilize this. And we're hearing a lot of positive response from constituents that just make it, it's simple, it's easy to register. You plug in your sort of demographics and your criteria, and it lets you know when your turn is about to come up so that you would be eligible for one of those appointment slots. We are hearing a lot, of course, about the small business issues and a lot of our challenges with our business owners. The state just released its second round of small business grants. Now, we had a first round back in January. And just a footnote to anybody that you think might have applied to that and didn't receive the initial award, you are still in the queue for the second tranche that's coming. And the closing period is coming up fast for applications for the second round, and that is on February 8. So AJ will put also into the chat a link for those that you know that might be eligible or might be interested in receiving business support. Rental relief is about the biggest action that we've actually taken so far. This is the time period of the year where we introduced a lot of new legislation and, you know, set that up for debate throughout the coming months. But we took early action on rental relief, $2.6 billion package that has really brought all the players to the table, our landlords, our renter advocacy groups, finance institutions to make sure the systems remain whole. Much like I led an effort on City Council last year to get our city's rental relief program up and running. This is going to facilitate up to 80% of the rent due between March of last year and June of this coming year with cooperation to make sure that evictions are not exercised right now. We want to keep people safely housed. We want to make sure that they don't fall into homelessness and complicate problems there. There's money on the table right now for landlords that are willing to be able to meet us in partnership on that. And we want to get it out to them as well. There's a webinar at the California Apartment Association this Friday at 10:00 AM and again at 3:00 PM. And that's at caa.net. If you'd like to learn a little bit more about, you know, yourself, if you're a landlord or anybody else that may want to avail themselves of that program. I received a number of committee assignments that'll generally direct some of the major work that I do, but it doesn't necessarily limit some of the bills that we're going to work on. I think most important to this community, being on the Water, Parks and Wildlife Committee is very exciting to me. We are at the end of the pipeline. We want a safe, clean and reliable water supply. We've got four state parks and beaches, and of course, our oceanfront shoreline. A lot of that effort is going to be able to go through this committee right now. Human services, transportation, emergency management, or some other key committees, as well as the Speaker's Leadership Team. I was the only freshman to be assigned, as is Assistant Majority Whip. So I'm pretty honored to be a part of that effort to move the floor business through the State Assembly. Lastly, on key legislation, I've had a chance to introduce a few pieces and more in development. We have a bill deadline coming up at the end of this month. Probably the most interesting to you is AB 11. So this is going to be an effort that I'm already working in partnership with the Climate Action Campaign and the San Diego Green New Deal Coalition to work on climate adaptation. One of the biggest issues that we've had around adaptation strategies is just this really big noisy mix of what we need to do about it and who should be in charge. AB 11 will set will set up regional authorities that will be allowed to localize that decision making and facilitate a lot of the state grants and future state funding decisions right back into local governments so that they can implement those plans. The needs that we have for climate action in San Diego are actually pretty diverse. The Ocean Beach and Mission Beach and Imperial Beach are very different than what we need up in Del Mar and La Jolla, all which are within the same Assembly District. That's very different than the Central Coast. It's also very different than inland California that has wildfire issues that we know are going to increase in experience over time. So we want to be able to regionalize this decision making and then fund it. And that's what AB 11 does. We're working on a conservation bill to really try to protect some of our native plant species that are along the coast. And then lastly, I'll mention working with the Brady Campaign to end gun violence. We're closing a loophole that is currently allowing ghost guns. These are accessory parts that can be easily kits that can be combined to form a firearm that are unregistered and untraceable. We are losing, we're going to be able to close that loophole. I expect that's going to be able to generate a little bit of noise. There's more in motion and more under development. I'm going to stop right there. Happy to take a couple of questions. But again, we're here to serve. Sometimes things touch the state purview. And I just invite you to reach out to Ansermio or my district office, which is online. If there's any way that we can be of assistance. And I look forward to staying in touch with the community and with this planning board in the future.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thanks for your time. I'll start it off with a pretty obvious question. There's been, you know, a lot of bills that have been attempted to be passed to, you know, that are aiming at development and the housing crisis. Can we expect anything coming up quickly on the legislative legislative calendar that is similar to those bills? Obviously, we support ones that continue to keep local control over planning and land use decisions. So I just want to know what's on the agenda and what we should be keeping eyes out for.
So I would say to be transparent with you, nothing is coming quickly. But there is some stuff set in motion. Some of the work that was generally led by senators is being reintroduced, including Senator Atkins, my partner representing this community, Senator Weiner and a few others right now. So there's a package of Senate bills. We'll get you those numbers probably after this. And you can disseminate to the rest of the board. So you can take a closer look at those. Those will go through the normal time course, a few committees, then bouncing over to the Assembly for more debate and more discussion. I'll be certain to circle back with you and other planning group members in the Assembly District to get that perspective.
Okay, great. Indeed. So do I have any other questions for the Assembly Member? Any state issues that are burning holes in your brains? Okay, well, if anything does come up, I'll put in a shameless plug. Assembly Member Ward and I will be sitting down together on the 16th. He's been so gracious to give me 45 minutes of his time for a Point Loma Association community conversation. So I hope you guys will attend that and we can, you know, talk more about all this exciting stuff, especially the climate action stuff. All over the peninsula, obviously, we're surrounded by water. So we're pretty concerned with with sea level rise and.
Yeah, for example, what you mentioned earlier, what Mayor Gloria mentioned about the Ocean Beach Pier. That's just one very localized example of what we need for dollars that actually match the adaptation needs of a local community. So so all my best to you. I know you have a busy agenda tonight, and I really appreciate your time.
Yeah, we appreciate all your time and attention as well. And AJ has been great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to keep chugging along here. I see Teddy. And then also Aaron is here with Nathan Fletcher's office with an important update. So I'm going to bounce over to Teddy first, and then we'll go to Aaron.
Hey, everyone. Good to see you. Thanks to the planning board. Hope everyone's doing well. Just want to say thanks to the OB planning board. As always, you all are doing so much to keep us informed of what's going on on the ground and taking a lot of important information through your select committees. So I appreciate that and hope everyone's doing well. Also want to just give a shout out to arts and culture. That was a very exciting conversation around the importance of that. I've talked to Tracy a lot about my personal interests in this topic. And so it's super exciting to know that leadership is also supportive of that, especially in OB. Such an important thing. So that was awesome to hear. Also looking forward to the feedback on the STVR discussion. I'll save it for that item. I don't want to get into it now. As you know, I'm not the lead in the office on that. So my role tonight is really to take a lot of that input back to the office. As you heard from Mayor Gloria, we are trying to act on this very soon. This item is already in process to be routed. We're hoping to have that on council docket within the month. If not sooner. So we'll keep you posted on that. We are routing it, and I look forward to the conversation tonight. The other things I just wanted to mention, there was a vaccine town hall this week with Mayor Gloria and Council President Campbell, along with some regional leaders on the topic of vaccines. It's a super important topic to Council President Campbell. She's a former physician and really has an experience with the topic of health and is trying to really expand the efforts that are going on around the vaccine and overall COVID-19 response. So I will link the town hall in the chat if you didn't have a chance to watch it, just in case you want to see that information. It was pretty informative, and we were lucky to have all the books in one set of things. Just wanted to shout out that. There will be a franchise fee forum tomorrow at 5:30 PM. Just wanted to remind folks about that. There is also the franchise fee agreement, another huge topic that we are garnering community input for. I will link the site to register for that event tomorrow at 5:30 PM. That's February the 4th, so that you can register if you haven't already. We're doing these throughout the city in partnership with the mayor's office, really trying to get that community input. So the one for District Two will be tomorrow. I'll link that for you all as well. Mayor Gloria touched on the issue of the OB Pier. I know it's come up quite a bit. We are looking for an update on that, obviously, on the damage and overall assessment of it and next steps. So we're working with their office and their departments to try to figure out what the next steps were. But I had that on my notes as an issue that's been coming up. So just wanted to address that and thank their teams for keeping us up to date on on things as they're assessing it. Also wanted to just thank the mayor's office and Koda specifically for helping us get some small businesses there. Clarity on outdoor dining as we've been reopening, there's been a lot of questions around that. And what's, you know, allowed, what isn't. And Koda's office and the mayor's office have been helping us get those questions answered. So if you come into those situations where, you know, you have questions about what is proper operations, let us know. We've been getting those questions a lot. As far as council has been going, there have been a few big items approved. Eviction moratorium was extended, operation shelter to home, and the convention center was extended as well. And so those are huge things. We're also looking at the rental assistance program, as was alluded to earlier. So I won't spend some some time on that. But also wanted to mention this third party app fee cap that is going to be a discussion that's coming up that will also help small businesses. We met with a bunch of our small businesses from throughout the district pretty recently. And a few of the things that came up were the fact of curbside pickup to allow them to have people, you know, given that they were closed, have folks to come up and do pickup without having to get a ticket for it. The mayor's office issued an executive order on that to try to allow for curbside pickup in addition to trying to regulate the cap on fees that third party delivery services can charge these restaurants. So you have our local mom and pop shops and right now, at least for the most part, it was delivery only. And for them to stay alive, they have to pay those fees to if they don't have a delivery person in house. And so companies like DoorDash are able to charge a fee on that. And so a lot of times these restaurants were in the red on that. And so we are thankful for action to alleviate that pressure to help small businesses stay open during this time. So we're excited about that coming forward pretty soon, too. And last thing is vendors ordinance. That's obviously top of mind for us, and we are excited to get that done, as Mayor Gloria said, within 60 days. And obviously, with more community input and especially from OB, as we know, it's a specific and unique issue here in Ocean Beach. So that's all I have. Really happy to take any questions. I will link all the things I mentioned just now in the chat and hope everyone stays well.
Teddy, do we have any questions? Um, yeah, not about short term rentals because we'll obviously get to that when we get to that action item. Okay, awesome. I'm gonna go to Aaron now to give us the updates of the county. Okay, awesome. I'm gonna go to Aaron now to give us the updates of the county.
Hey, everyone. Aaron here from Nathan Fletcher's office. District Four. Andrea asked me to come here and talk about. The needle exchange program, some stuff with the COVID vaccine. And homeless outreach. You know, do you want me to start, Andrea?
Let's start with the homeless outreach and finish with needle exchange. So homeless outreach vaccination, needle exchange.
Yeah, I don't know how much the mayor talked about this, but. But there's a program, an outreach program that's that's through PATH. It's mostly through the city and it has to do with the. You know, having. Social workers instead of police coming out to find homeless people and give them services. If there are people that have extreme needs. And the county will in. Give resources for that. But what our policy advisor said is that we could have somebody from the San Diego. Homeless Outreach Team, actually like an expert coming and talking to you guys if you're interested in that.
Yeah.
Very entrusted.
Yeah. He thinks he's muted. So just a little bit more about the program. I guess there'll be $1.5 million allocated from the city for that. And that's going to be through the. Coordinated Street Outreach Program and it offers a different approach. What's normally happening with police coming out to deal with homeless people. So I guess homeless out advocate Mitchell McConnell set the new initiative offers a better approach. So again, I'll I'll find a. A contact and have that person come out to your next meeting. As far as the needle exchange program. I guess last March, there was a committee put together to do research. On doing a program that would decrease disease from being spread and overdose from happening. The board voted three to two to pass this proposition. Or resolution rather to create a countywide action plan. To have a comprehensive substance use harm reduction intervention program. As far as. The COVID vaccine, over the next two weeks, we're going to be, we're going to have a limited amount of COVID. Vaccines, we're going to be behind. And so we won't be moving into the next tier. We're still on 1A. Until. Well, until we can, you know, catch up on on vaccines. So right now, as soon as we open. Vaccine appointments within four minutes, they're all filled. And that's an indication that. We just don't have have the supply necessary. And really, it's it's up to the state from that point to all the information that we really have until. You know, we get more funding from the Biden administration or from the state.
Wonderful. And so as far as the needle exchanges going, is that going to be one set operation in the city or will it be going throughout?
Hold on, give me one second. It's it's countywide. I think it's going to be. Hold on, my policy person sent me a document on this. So your question is if it's going to be a one a one time thing or ongoing thing?
Well, no, a stationary thing or if it's going to go throughout the city and actively reach out to communities of concern?
Yeah, let me find that out for you.
Okay, thank you. You can just email it back to me, too, if you don't have it right in front of you. Yeah, because we're we're just falling a little behind. But that's great to hear. Awesome. And hopefully we'll get some more vaccines soon. Thanks, Aaron. I don't think Miller is here tonight. Correct me if I'm wrong. Nope. Okay, great. So we can move into our first. Action item. Oh, sorry. Is there anyone here looking to make a non-agenda public comment?
Andrea, real quick, I put it in the chat, but. The project applicants, I just want to make sure we know that their project. Vote was the recommendation was approved via the consent agenda. So they don't need to hang tight unless they're interested in seeing the other issues.
Well, before they do go, if they're still here, I will go ahead and fill out the Bulletin 620 for them. So that their full recommendation is complete and they can move forward and best of luck on your construction.
Great.
Anyone else for non-agenda public comment? Okay, wonderful. So Tracy, I'm going to pass the pass it over to you now to go over. How the election procedure is going to work and then we do have to vote on one proposition today. To make sure that everything goes smoothly. So Tracy, taken away.
Yeah, hi. Okay, so we have decided to do elections three different ways this year. One is we're going to have a ballot box that people can drop a physical ballot off at. We haven't. Solidified that location yet, but we're hoping that it'll be the. Business center. And the second way is obviously mail in. So somebody can mail in their ballot if they want. And all the information for mail in and drop off will be on the actual ballot. The third way is kind of new and exciting to all of us, but we're going to do digital voting. Corey from the Town Council has agreed to set up a digital voting system for us. And it will enable people to pick their district and vote for the candidate or candidates in their district. And it will also enable them to submit their proof of residency. And then one of us who is in charge of monitoring that will verify the proof of residency and then that proof of residency will disappear. Because we don't want that kind of stuff just lingering around forever and ever. We just want to prove that they live where they say they're going to live. And that they can vote and then we're just going to make it go away after that and we won't keep records of that. So it will be secure and. Hopefully, everything will work great. So that's our voting process this year. Also, there's been a huge concern about. Candidates receiving or having to go out and solicit signatures this year because most people are terrified to open their door. Or to talk to anybody or even to touch a pen nowadays. So what we want to do this year, and Andrea has already cleared this with her planner, is we'd like to. Have a vote on whether or not we could waive the signature requirement for this year. And or until the COVID emergency has been lifted. So it could go to next year, but we don't know that yet. It's just a matter of, you know, when COVID is over and when everybody's safe to walk around and get signatures. Now, I realize that some of you may have already gotten your signatures and I'm sorry that you did that now. Without waiting for a vote, but hey, you know, it's great. You're following the rules. So that's wonderful. So I guess what I'd like to do is make a motion that we waive the signature requirement for this year. And. Postpone it until the. COVID crisis is over.
Yeah, I would prefer, yeah, if we just do it year by year, you know, and revisit this. So it's not, yeah, so. It's an acceptable amendment to both Tracy and Jane.
I have a question, if I may.
Yep.
Without naming names, how many? Candidates do we have signatures for? Do you have an idea, Andrea?
I Craig is the only one who went out and got signatures so far, but I do have otherwise completed applications.
Yeah. Yeah, and I should probably say, let's see, the people who I have applications for on hand right now. Are Richard, George, Craig, Chris and Tom. And if I don't have your application on file by the end of tonight. You will be a write-in candidate because I need to get this information to Corey so that he can program. The online system. So if you have not gotten your application into me by the end of this evening, you will be a write-in candidate. And I that's that's a firm, firm rule.
Is there anyone else in District Four? Just wondering.
I do not know. It's on the website. Craig.
Great. So we do have a motion on the floor. So we'll, if Tracy could please call the roll.
Okay. So this is a motion to waive the signatures for this year. Anthony.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Craig.
Despite having them, yes, I'll waive the requirement.
Chris.
And thank you to the committee for working on this.
George.
Yes, and thank you.
Jane.
Yes.
Jenna. Was that Jenna?
Do you hear me? Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Sounds like you're at a party. Kevin.
I mean, yes, even though I I do think this signature gathering process is one of the more important things you will ever do as a board member and then ensuing conversations that follow. But yes.
Okay, Nicole.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
I vote yes. Virginia.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. I I agree with Kevin, by the way, but I still I do understand that that. You know, COVID is scary.
Yeah, we totally understand and that's why we're just suspended for one year. I think we all agree about the signature. Requirement is important, which is why we've always kept it even when we were, you know, going through that re re renegotiation of our bylaws a few years ago. Awesome. Okay. So we are moving on to our first, our second. Action item. We're going to go with the short term rental ordinance. So. The the subcommittee on this hasn't been able to hold a formal meeting as of late. But we still do have the recommendations from previously. Now, if everyone remembers, I believe back in November it was. We wanted, we made a motion to figure out what, you know, where we were on actually enforcing the existing code. You know, since it's clear that this ordinance is moving forward as is, it's become apparent that there is no will at the city to, I guess, enforce the code. So we, I would like this conversation to be around the ordinance and focused on, you know, what we would like to see in the final passage of it. So I'm going to turn, so I guess. I want to just open the floor out for comments. I guess I will, of course, start with Kevin. But if you could please raise your hands, just you, again, you just hover over your name and the participant screen, you can raise your hand and we can go from there. I'm going to be taking notes about the recommendations and hopefully we can put together. A good slate of stuff to make the make sure that, you know, we keep OB OB. Okay, Kevin, the floor is yours.
Hopefully, I'm not stepping on Anthony's toes here, but the the committee put together 10 recommendations. That the board previously looked at, but then the board, if you remember. Basically said, we want to enforce the code. You know, that was before the mayoral election. So stuff has obviously changed politically since then. I I took those 10 recommendations. And I spent about 10 minutes before the meeting and I threw together a motion. That adds to that and it could be used as a letter. Put that either on the the screen share or the chat. And I would like to make that my my motion. Obviously, I don't want to, you know, get in the way of any discussion, but it would give some people something that you want.
Yeah, if you could post it in the chat so we can read it and see it, because the screen share kind of takes up the whole screen and then we can't see everyone else's faces.
Okay, it's kind of. But. And it's also in markup, but here goes. Nothing. You might have to expand your chat window. And it might take multiple posts to even get it all in there.
All right. Okay.
Go ahead. I'll get it in there as quickly as I can and then you guys can can go ahead.
Yeah, Anthony, did you? Have any add anything to say?
No, I'm just looking at Kevin's thing here. It looks like you summarized everything, although part of it seems to be. Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's cutting off all of the strikeouts. So let me, I'll do a new a new post on it.
I will say that. You know, the the subcommittee, as we came through these recommendations, with the exceptions of the ones that Kevin added. Since we did that last, you know, we haven't been able to meet, we haven't had a quorum. But I think they still stand. And they're they're, I think, from what I could remember and tell. With the climate today, even with COVID, that they're applicable. And I think that maybe if if those can be considered to be. Incorporated with the city's with the council members. Actions that that I think would enhance what they're trying to do. So that's just my. My little recommendation.
Jane.
I wanted to support Craig's motion of Neander's. Because we have on our block. Six condominiums that were originally owner occupied. Now, three of them are vacation rentals. So we have an ever changing cast of characters parking on the street and partying and it's it's not nice. So I just wanted to support Craig when he said. The Neander's issue is really important.
Distance requirements.
Distance restriction is. It's it's the keystone to anything that's going to work.
Yeah, we hear you. Yeah, and it it seems a lot more workable than the lottery system. Like the mayor's office said, the key is enforcement. I personally would actually like to see part of the ordinance include. An enforcement clause. I know that there's. So if we're not seeing, you know, a certain threshold of hosts needing the. Meeting with compliance. So if we're, say, only at like an 80 80% compliance rate among all of the Airbnbs in the city. I would like that to trigger just a relook at the ordinance and possibly rewriting of it. So we can just make sure that we are monitoring. Oh, how well this is working and the efficacy of it and and also giving, you know, incentive to make sure that enforcement is funded. Otherwise, you know, we'll have to go back and re retool the whole thing.
A great point, Andrea. Without enforcement, regulations aren't really going to do much. So I'd really like some more information on where that funding for enforcement is going to be coming from.
I saw your hand up. All right.
Andrea, I have a question. Sorry if I jumped in front of somebody had a hand up. So what we're looking at the screen, I'm just trying to understand. Is this something that the. STVR committee put together or is this Kevin, did you just create this on the fly here? I'm just trying to understand what we're looking at.
Well, I have a, no, this is the, this is the committee recommendations and then I I marked it up and added some items. Recommendations on the screen. If you guys want to. One of the, one of the boards, I think they went through one by one and just like did a bunch of individual votes on whether to include. Some of these things in the recommendation. I kind of like that method. Yeah, to answer your question, Chris, this is built. Upon what came out of the committee.
Okay.
Some of the things from committee were already incorporated when the thing was drafted by the city attorney's office.
Okay. Thank you. I'm still reading it. I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, it was sort of the culmination of the input from the. From the committee focused on this topic. So I'm reading. Thank you.
It looks like it still butchered the formatting.
Yeah, it's kind of jumping around, but. Yeah, there were 10 in total. Is that right?
There there were 10 committee. The ones that were. Already included in the draft ordinance were removing the bed and breakfast part of the code because it's sort of superfluous. It created a potential workaround. That was that was that was done by through the city attorney's office. Making them non-transferable. That was done by the city attorney's office. I also removed. There was one item where we basically said we wanted to, we said the permits. Must be linked to unique owners and to remove LLC and other type of loopholes. unique owners and to remove LLC and other type of loopholes. They could operate as hosts because then you can have a situation where you can have one person effectively controlling many, many short-term rentals. Um, I, that, that came out of the subcommittee. Um, I, I know the, the legalese response on that has been that we, that they can't discriminate on the title of posts. Um, so assuming that's true, I, I just crossed that one out. So basically a renter can be a host just as easily as, as a owner. I mean, I don't know, it's hard to run an Airbnb, but whatever. It has to be equitable.
Hey, Kevin. Thanks, Anthony. Kevin, could you send this to me as a document? I'm copying and pasting it out of the chat, but it's coming out. The numbers are like all different. I just wanna make sure I have, um, the correct info. Would you mind sending that to me?
I will do that right now as a Word file appropriate.
Thanks, cuz I just have like two number fours and two number nines. So I just wanna make sure I have the right, um, numbering down. Thanks, man.
If you could send it to me as well, please.
So Kevin, to your point eight, uh, fees covering enforcement should be based on nights rented. Do you, um, would this be a fee, I guess, a yearly fee to keep the permit based on nights rented? Or would you still have a fee with the initial application of the permit?
Um, I think generally they tie the fees to costs. So the permitting, or sorry, the license fee would be like administrative fee of, you know, of approving that license. But the fee that actually covers enforcement officers, you know, extra trash pickup, that sort of thing, I think, that needs to really be decoupled and it needs to be somehow, um, you know, based on the activity from that, from that unit. I didn't, I didn't see anything in the ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't see anything in the ordinance that, that. I think Campbell initially tried to apply sort of a specific fee to different uses and then they had to back up from that because they didn't have a nexus of what to charge people. But I guess my point is that we need to advocate for charging small timers small fees and the big timers big fees. Because if you don't, it will, it will discourage the small timer. You know, they're gonna be paying effectively a, a very disproportionate share of those enforcement costs. And, you know, grandma renting out a spare room, let's face it, she's not gonna be a big burden on, on code enforcement.
So it would be a yearly fee or some kind of monthly fee based on the amount of time you are renting out your room and, or how big it is?
I guess it could be, uh, just based, maybe based on the booking amount, sort of like a T O T, but on top of that. I don't think T O T pays for those sorts of things. Uh, T O T goes to pay for convention center improvements, et cetera, you know, tourism stuff. So I guess it'd have to be some kind of tax.
Kevin, would you send a copy of those 10 points to, to me? To the Goranskis.
Yeah, Kevin, it's really, it's hard because number one, I don't see it to everyone. I don't see a number one. I don't see a number five. I mean, I think everybody was gonna wanna read it before we approve it or disapprove.
So Kevin, I have a question for you, sure?
Yeah, the checks.
This is Richard.
The chat box is lousy for long se- sections of text like that. Um.
I mean, Kevin, if you have it, um, on a document, you can just share your screen. We could all review it. That might be easier than circulating an email right now.
I wanna do both.
I have a question. Kevin, this is Richard. Can you hear me?
Richard, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Very good. Uh, all things being the same with these recommendations, wh- what's to stop the five-unit complex next to me from turning into a motel? Are any of these recommendations preventing that?
Yes, um, the distance restriction would prevent that from happening. That's really the only thing that would prevent that from happening. Um, in, in lieu of that, you could also advocate for restricting to maybe one per parcel. So you can't have, you know, a 10-unit complex with 10 vacation rentals on it. Keep in mind that some condos, each individual unit has its, has its own parcel number, or maybe it would be one per lot. I, I don't know. You'd have people fighting over, over licenses within the lot, but it would prevent that.
So what about the owner that owns all five of these? I thought you were gonna only allow one per owner.
Uh, my understanding of the draft ordinance is that it does only allow one per social security number, but it does not tie that social security number to, say, property ownership. So the owner, the owner would have to, you know, get their, their brother-in-law or, you know, their employees of their hosting company or, you know, the, the guy that runs the 710 rentals company. He'd have to have a, a different, uh, name on each license. Uh, that would be the, so the limit really, I guess, is how many, how many acquaintances you can, uh, put on these licenses. That's my understanding.
loophole.
So, yeah, they could do all five or 10 units on there.
So that sounds like a worthless, uh, restriction to me.
Well, I, I agree with that. The, the one per social security number is a worthless restriction cuz there's many social security numbers. Um, that's, that's coming from the draft ordinance, so that's not something that, uh, the committee, um, proposed.
So Kevin, can I ask a question?
Yeah, all right, Nicole.
Um, with the distance restriction, what happens if you have two property owners that are next to each other that both want a, you know, vacation rental permit? It goes to a, um, sorry, what's the word? Lottery system? Or there was some talk of the lottery with, with councilman Campbell's proposition. Um, were you keeping with that same framework as a way to, you know, enact some of these things or?
Nicole, what, one of the, one of the things that comes up in that regard is that there are a lot already in existence and so you can't approach this and the city's kind of trying to approach it as saying, well, we'll just act like none of them exist any, exist at, at this time and we'll just dole them out based on some system that we're, that we're creating this ordinance. The problem is, is there are many blocks that have multiples. And so basically, somebody is gonna lose, but the approach to telling people why they're gonna lose is because you've been breaking the law the whole time. So, you know, but you're, you're gonna have people, oh, by the way, Teddy, this is for you. There will be lawsuits because people will claim that just cuz we were breaking the law the whole time, we were here. So we've got a vested right. So anything the city does is gonna cause a lawsuit. And the more effective the thing they do is, the more lawsuits they will have. The less effective, the more happy the, the platforms and the owners will be. And that's just how it is.
I'm gonna check out and log in on my, from my phone because my computer can't handle all of this at once.
Hey, Nicole.
Do you think it's important?
This is Teddy. Uh, I just wanted to underscore the importance of that question. Um, I think there's a difference in philosophy on the lottery versus the geographic, uh, system that's in play. Uh, and I do think there are two different ways to get to the same answer, but I do appreciate the question. Obviously, not working on this ordinance directly, but I will take that back, um, in, including Craig's comments. But I just wanted to say that, that is an important distinction to make about how these are gonna end up getting doled out. Is either, it's gonna be through a lottery system, um, which is in an effort to geographically spread these out throughout the city. Um, so I appreciate the question. If there's other things I can follow up with, please let me know. My email's in the chat, too.
Hey, Teddy, is there someone else that I should reach out to specifically with my questions? Who's the point person on this?
Our chief of staff, Venus Molina, has been, uh, guiding this ship. We praise her a lot for taking this on. Obviously, Council President Campbell is deeply involved in this. Um, feel free to reach out her direct, to her directly, but I'm happy to connect you, um, directly as well.
Okay, thanks.
And, and if I may, let me enhance the, um, the proposal that the, the, the subcommittee did, uh, regarding the distance. Um, the, I, I believe, if I recall, the intent of, of what we're proposing, uh, would be to do a, a hundred-foot distance between the tier-three permits and, and the zones and residential zones. And that would be beyond, after a lottery pick. So, um, you know, you'd have to then look at that and say, okay, if two competing, you know, two, two, two neighbors were picked for the lottery, how then would the city go about disappointing one, one neighbor? Another thing is that, you know, to close a loophole, we want, we are recommending that permits must be linked to a unique owner. Um, remove the language allows a, an LLC or a LEX or other loopholes to, to, to close that down. Because like Richard said, you know, right now, the way it's written, um, it's easy to, to see where you can get, do a loophole. So, um, it makes it ineffective. So our recommendation is, you know, it, to make this effective, you gotta have some kind of nuts and bolts in this thing and you have to look at, at these, you know, the minutia of these, of these, uh, requirements, uh, in the MOA. So that's, I'd like to just make sure that, that's clear. If you, I think now Kevin's gonna put this, if he's gonna be able to share the screen, um, you know, be more clear to you if you can read the whole thing.
I sent an email to everyone. I don't think I could run WebEx and these programs at the same time. Maybe someone else can share.
I'll try to share it. I've got it up here. So I didn't wanna, let's see if I can do it cuz I'm on the. How's that?
You know, share the 10 things from the committee. Uh, the one I sent was, uh, was expanding upon this.
Do you see it?
I do see that.
Okay. Let me, hopefully that everybody can, can see it clearly.
That's perfect, Anthony. Thank you.
Yeah, this doesn't include whatever Kevin, uh, unilaterally did this afternoon, so.
I guess I'm confused about point seven. Commercial zones should be tier four. Is that not just the Mission Beach cargo?
No.
Tier four just means, basically means they're exempt from the cap. Um, I, I edited that to clarify that cuz it, it did seem confusing. But yeah, commercial zones should not be subject to a cap, I think.
Yeah, Kevin, wasn't it the understanding that commercial zones were basically fair game because, um, visitor lodging was a proper accommodation in a visitor lodging or a commercial zone?
Yeah, we wanted to encourage that, those, those locations.
So would it be better to just describe it as commercial zones, uh, should, should be, uh, should be open and allowable to all, uh, commercial and lodging uses? Just do it that way?
Well, in terms of the MOA, we should say that tier four, it should be commercial zone only, uh, only commerce, only commercial zones can be in the tier four.
Right, so tier four is commercial zone or, okay, same thing.
Um, I can try to screen share my, my motion. Um, that it, it includes that change and, uh, I think some other stuff you guys would like. I would propose, if we don't, if it's too much to bite off, we can just go through kind of an overview of it and then maybe vote on, on the individual points.
I have one question. Um, I, you know, cuz there's commercial zones and then there's the mixed-use zones that are both. Um, I, I happen to live in a mixed-use zone that has a lot of housing and then all of a sudden, if you say commercial zone, then it's possible that people might be like, everything in the mixed-use is fair game, you know? So is anything in the ordinance making it clear about mixed-use and commercial?
Tracy, what is your zoning?
Uh, mixed-use. That's all I know. I don't know what the number is.
But do you know, do you know the, do you know the denomination?
No, I don't.
Is it CC42?
Yeah, no, I don't.
Okay.
But I'm, you know, I'm, I'm West Point Loma, just, um, west of, uh, Bacon, and everything here is mixed-use. Everything.
She's across the street from hotels, so.
There is a small strip of.
Oh, oh, well, that's, uh, the, the uptight in that area is RM512.
Yeah, never, I don't, I didn't remem-, I don't remember what the number was. But, you know, like I said, everything, every residential in a number of blocks of me are, it's considered mixed-use and you could have a commercial, a commercial entity as well as a residential.
Hmm. That's true for all of Voltaire as well, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, it's probably Voltaire, too.
Yeah, the intention was anywhere that visitor accommodations are allowed currently should be allowed these without limitation. I think right now, they basically went to the zoning table and checked off which areas can have it. Um, I don't think commercial was included in that cuz I know some commercial property owners were upset about that. So they effectively would be following hotel laws, which is kinda crazy to run a single vacation rental. They would actually be under stricter laws than someone in a single-family zone. So, so, yeah, I think the committee's intention was to allow, allow unlimited STRs in commercial and other zones that, that already allow hotels.
Yeah, which is where I live. So, I mean, you know, we already have a huge problem with short-term rentals down on this end, just to begin with. Um, just because there are so many rental situations that get swapped to short-term rentals. So, I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a little, we're, we're trying to get more mixed-use all throughout the city and all throughout the state, actually, so that we can have more residential. Um, but if, if we say that it's okay to put short-term rentals all over the, you know, commercial and mixed-use zones, then we're basically gonna have nothing but short-term rentals here. So, you know, it, it's just a concern of mine. That's all. I don't know how we can fix that.
Thank you, Tracy. I see George, um, with his hand up patiently waiting. George?
Yeah, I was wondering about the three-day minimum. Can we increase that?
Oh, I think Coastal's gonna shut that down pretty quickly. They're in, um, that's what they're going back and forth with Del Mar about currently. So I, I unfortunately don't think, yeah, we can increase it.
Yeah, okay, because that would make a big difference.
I also think that one's really hard to enforce. You're gonna get hosts still booking, you know, Friday, Saturday, and they'll just leave Thursday, uh, unbooked and uncharged.
It's also, it's also an economic for, issue for people, you know, like poor, poorer people should be able to vacation, too. So, you know, you're kinda discriminating against poorer people if you don't have, like, if you have a longer period of time for vacation rentals. So that's just my opinion on that. I think three days is fair.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking more seven, but if it's not gonna fly, it's not gonna fly.
Yeah, what, uh, one of our goals in the subcommittee was to really draft some, a recommendation that we thought would be realistically, you know, incorporated and, and, and brought it, you know, considered, not something that we, we, wasn't everything we wanted, but of course, what we wanted in our hearts is a lot of times not politically realistic, you know?
So, so my question is, if that's the case, am I, have I misunderstood something? That Coronado's got a 30-day minimum?
Well, Coronado has enforced their code pretty much all along. Their code actually is very similar to what ours is right now. Um, and they just, you know, they have a lot more, um, I think, angry. Um, and they just, you know, they have a lot more, um, I think angry residents there that are in charge. And they're a different city.
So I, uh, Kevin, in the sake of time, I've, I've gone through your, your changes and I, and I like them. Um. And if it's not too premature. Um, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this as our recommendation to council members. Campbell's uh, office. Or is that, is that too quick?
No, it's not premature. I would just like to have um, the efficacy clause in there. So if we're not meeting a certain threshold of. Compliance, it just triggers revisit to the ordinance.
I will allow you to take that motion then.
Um, well, is there any discussion, any more discussion about what uh, the points Kevin's gone through? Anyone want to see something slightly changed, something? Taken out? I know Tracy, you've had a concern.
Can you scroll down to see number nine and number 10, please?
Yeah, I don't think we need the um, big part at the top, the big chunk at the top.
Don't need it or don't want to vote on that?
So we don't have to look at it. It's kind of, you know.
Okay, I, I guess my, let me, let me address that real quick uh, before I scroll away from it. I wanted to make it clear that the OB planning board is not endorsing full-term rentals. We're really just forced into a situation of trying to. You know, make sausage here with the policy that I, I think the neighborhood is very, very adamantly opposed. Um. Converting housing to, to full-time units. So I, I just want to make that clear on record. Um. That's, that was my reasoning for putting the top, but in, in the interest of uh. At least making this ordinance better than it is, you know, here's the following recommendations.
Kevin, you need to correct sentence number one from STR to STVR.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I like that because it, they call them STR.
There you go. Just be consistent. That's all.
All right, let me scroll down here. Take, take your time. I don't want to feel like I, I mean, I did just literally force this on everyone, but uh. The bottom couple ones.
Anthony, I think I heard you said, uh, you're on the, the committee, right Anthony? So, so. I, I think I heard you say that reviewing what the committee came up with against what Kevin just put together. There's uniformity there and there's support from at least your perspective on the committee.
Yeah, I like it. He's a, he's got some more clarity. Uh, we, ours was very, a lot shorter. So there's more language in it, but. Um, what he's, what he's highlighted in yellow, the changes or the, I think that's right, right Kevin? What highlighted nails, what you've added or changed?
Yellow is additions and then there's strikeouts.
Yeah.
Uh, so probably six of these are sort of expanding upon the, the committee motion. I reordered them a little bit if, in order of importance as I thought. Um, and then there's some that are. Uh, brand new that were not voted on by the committee.
Yeah, those, those ones that are new, I, I, I personally, I like it. It looks appropriate for me. Um, eight, nine, really.
Is there a reason that there's no host site compliance mentioned anywhere in here? I don't, that hasn't been updated to the ordinance yet, has it?
I put that as number one. I think that's a huge, yeah, that's a huge.
Okay, got it. That's the one that was missing this whole time. Okay.
Yeah, because we all know Airbnb is happy to rent out any, anything, anywhere, anytime, you know, without regard for, for laws. So. If, if we don't hold their feet to the fire and, and find them for listing illegal uh, units, then they're going to continue to do it.
Okay, so then I think it would be appropriate then to add, um. To, to add in what I've been talking about, the uh, compliance rate to number one. Um, if, you know, if we don't have a certain threshold of compliance with what's listed on the platform accountability. Or do you think it would be better as a whole separate? I think it makes sense to go into one.
Yeah, what, what language do you want to use for that? I'll, I'll type it in.
Um. And if, to do, 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 sue to um, and platforms, if there, um, if. Less than, I mean, what compliance rate? I've seen, so from the typical cities that I've seen, they're getting around like. Around 80% compliance. So um, if the compliance rate for listed. For listings on host platform sites is less than 80%, uh, the ordinance needs to be revisited.
In other words, if, if in an ineffectual ordinance, it's got to be revisited, right? Yeah.
But I want, I want, I always like a number, you know, because then you can't really dance around it. Like, oh, we kind of think you gotta.
What are you calling compliance? Is it compliance to what?
So it would be, so you'd have to have your permit, you'd have to be paying your fees to the city. Uh, you'd have to be registered through the ordinance as a, a legal host. So if we finds that there are listings and the host hasn't gone through their registration and receiving their license, then that would be non-compliance.
Is that something that you might want to add in there? So the lawyers don't argue about it?
We're adding it to number one.
Okay, I'm going to take a little liberty here. Um. Is that acceptable?
Compliance rate to these regulations is less than in for 80% the ordinance. Um, I think the, um, this should trigger a reevaluation of the ordinance. Good legal terms, right? Trigger.
Uh, number two, uh, if some of you guys aren't familiar, uh, planning commission saw this proposal. Uh, they kicked it back to staff. Uh, they were sort of concerned about. The, you know, vague language on, on enforcement and some other vagaries. Uh, they were afraid we're going to get taken advantage of. Um, one of their, their biggest um. Part of their motion was to recommend distributing the caps by district. Um, instead of citywide. All right. So if you have a, if you have a population, if you have a number of permits citywide, they're all going to end up on the coast, right? Uh, so they said, let's, let's cap it across districts and that'll sort of just, you know, distribute these a little bit more.
You need to change that one to STVR instead of STR as well.
And some say that's, I think actually planning commission said that that gives up more oppo- economic opportunity to some other areas. So all the. The licenses aren't gobbled up on the coast. Um. I, I could personally care less about. About giving economic interest to people that take away housing, but whatever. It sounds good.
The first thing, playing devil's advocate, the first thing I would ask is, okay, how would you cap it per capita, per housing unit, you know?
Well, right now in the draft, it's based on housing units. It's based on point seven five of. Uh, total housing units, which ends up with about 5,000 or so. Um. I believe that will actually allow all the existing uh, full-time STRs if they choose to get licenses. Um, because most of them are not full-time. But anyways, the, so the planning commission said, let's, let's increase that to 1% by district. Um, I'm a little afraid that Campbell is going to, is going to take one part of that and not the other and say, well, let's just do 1% citywide, which. Increases the whole number by, you know, 33% of number of permits, right? So the, the planning commission recommendation on districts is, is key. It would still be based on housing. Um, and then they sort of left it open or some other um, geographical uh, distribution. Which I think, you know, Craig and I think the distance one is, is really the best way to do that, but you could ask for both.
Kevin, that's the um, point I was just going to ask a little bit more about for number three there. We might have to be a little more explicit or define. What low, medium um, density is in both the first sentence and the second sentence. Right?
Yeah, Kevin, I just actually, I, I agree with that. If, I would like to add the RM24 zone to that. Because that is almost the entire area where I live, with the exception of the commercial areas. And some people might think about that area as more of a high-density area, but it's really all residential. And I mean, I'd like to do the hundred-foot distance in that area as well because that would really help limit some of them. If we could just add that.
The, yeah, so you're RM2. Uh, yeah, so initially, I, I think we just said in residential, but there's, there's. There's like 50 different residential designations. Um, low, medium and, and low density are actually terms used in the, in the city planning.
Okay.
In the general plan. I, I could, if, if, if we decide to, I could identify all of those. Um, zones that meet those same uh, density categories. See, the idea is if there's like, you know, there's one that's for townhouses. There's RT, there's RX, there's. Mixed use there. But if it's, if it's residential and it's between this density and this density, which is RM1 to RM3 as an example of that. It would be subject to that.
Yeah, I like, I mean, I think I'm just trying to make this as watertight as possible. So if it's, if they, if it's defined already in the code. Then we don't need to define it. Maybe you have to capitalize low slash medium density if it's a defined term. Otherwise I would support adding in, you know, the full breadth of zones that we are talking about here.
And I mean, if you're saying that RM1 through RM3 is in that low to medium, then I think it's important to call that out and say anything between RM1 and RM3. Instead of just, oh, you kind of did. So, I mean, I would say RM1 through RM3 instead of a hyphen. I mean, it's a small change that.
Yeah, yeah, I think, right, I agree Tracy, but there's others as.
Yeah, and there's a lot of, you know, I, I mean, we don't want to give them any wiggle room.
I'm not able to do that right now, but I can certainly. Add that if the board gives me permission.
Yeah, because I mean, honestly, I don't, you know, I don't, if people want to do short-term rentals in this area, great, but I don't want one every single building, you know? And the hundred-foot distance would really big, make a big deal here, especially since we have so many multi-units uh, in this area. So.
Yeah, the, the, the couple of blocks of like Cape May and Brighton down there, close to the beach.
Yep.
I mean, and then I'm talking four years ago when I actually mapped all these out. A third of those units are short-term rentals or were at least before COVID. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a crazy concentration.
You've walked my block area. You know that we've got all these like multi, you know, residential areas here and it's just like, I could see every single one of them turning into short-term rentals if we don't have a limit.
The distance is a very good approach, you guys. Um, for those of you that came up with that, it's, it's, it's an intelligent way to do it. I think it's fair. I think we just want to call out all the zones that it would be applicable to.
I was working on a list that had about 12 or so cities that have incorporated uh, distance restrictions. Um. The most common one I saw in there actually was 300 feet. So I threw that in for single family. I feel like they should be entitled to a little bit more. You know, spacing on this sort of thing. I, I think. You know, some, some kind of intelligent, I think effort needs to be put into. This, you know, determining that different zones have different sort of character and different tolerances for bad behavior.
Virginia made a good point in the comments that um, percentage caps obviously would raise every year. The number of allowable Airbnbs as new units are added onto the market and developed. Is there any way we can freeze that and maybe only have? The number of units allowed lifted every year or ever, for a certain amount of time?
I think that's what the uh, the zoning cap does. That's an absolute number pers- per district, right? Kevin, uh, the cap, the absolute number per district kind of takes, does that?
I don't understand the question. Are you saying if, if the number of housing increases, then a few more permits will become available each year? I, yeah, that's, that's what the current draft.
Yes.
And the, the committee didn't make any effort to, to change that aspect. Are you asking to, to freeze it or something?
Virginia, yeah, well, I'm in agreement with Virginia because I'll, it's going to continue to go up and up as we do see more development. Um, you know, I'd, I'd rather have it go up. Well, I guess it has to do with how the whole lottery system works out, right? And it, it's really bugging me that they haven't released a framework for how this is going to be decided. You know, if they're going to do, if they do a lottery every X number of years, I would, like, that would be when you would release permits, right? For the percentage cap.
My understanding from the, uh, from Venus's comments at planning commission is the lottery. If needed, and I, I disagree that there would even be a lottery because I think there's going to be more than plenty enough permits to go around. But regardless, the lottery would happen. Until all of the applicants have their uh, licenses. And then they keep their licenses unless they surrender it or get revoked. And then each year. If there's additional room for licenses, then people can apply for those, those new ones. Um, and then also as housing numbers increase, that would create additional licenses. So for example, we get. You know, a, 5,000 new dwelling units in Midway, you know, that would, that would allow 50 more. Uh, vacation rentals in the district or.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I would prefer it if that number, you know, wasn't just constantly attached to. The ever-increasing housing supply. Um, I would rather it be. Um, where the housing supply is now and then go up at a, a set fixed rate.
Yes, but again, again, the, the absolute cap per district would limit that anyway. Right? So once you bump up that cap, even if, if you have hu- uh, housing units increase, we, if we said we're only going to have, you know. 500 STDRs in District 2, that's it.
So I mean, are you saying?
There's the absolute cap.
Well, that's what one of the points is in here that we would have a district cap.
Scroll down again to, um, so I, we're not seeing, yeah, the little overture. Thank you.
Are you saying that it should just go up a certain percentage each year? Like we release another number of permits each year?
Yeah, not tied to actual housing stock. I think it should be significantly less.
Hmm. Yeah, it's funny because especially considering most of the housing going in is like bonus density subsidized stuff. So it's. And I, there's a point in there about that on, you know, specific to a parcel. Um, I think the comments in the committee with Pedro kind of made that clear. He said something to the effect of, if I get density bonuses. Because I built more units, I want to be able to use all of them that aren't, you know, bonus units. I want to be using the, all the other ones as vacation rentals. You know, so it, which undercuts the entire point of having, you know, those, those bonuses. Um, I, I mean, I'm not against the set percent. Increase. I think it makes sense to tie it to the housing numbers. If, if the housing numbers stayed flat or even went down, the, the number. Uh, licenses available would, would be fixed. The fact is, there's a lot of turnover. Um. Among the short, the, the, the part-time hosts, but there's, there's pretty significant turnover uh, among the full-time hosts as well. So I think there would still be. Once we do hit that cap, I think there would still be some, you know, replenishment and new um. Licenses available, even if no housing is built. Especially if it's by district because the other, only districts one, two, and three would, would get uh, would be impacted by a, a district cap.
So here's the question. If you're going to base it, if you're going to base it on new construction, why can't you require the new permit to be in the area where the new construction is?
I'm not sure I understand it. If the.
Okay, so you say, you say, we're going to build 5,000 new houses over in Midway and that's going to increase the number of licenses. If they go with a percentage base, then why can't you require that increase in licenses be in the same area where the new homes or the new residences are being built? Rather than pack them over in our area?
Uh, that would. I mean, if there was a, if there was a way to allocate by district, cap by district, I think that would reasonably. Put them in the area it's built. So like Mission Valley is growing very fast right now. Um, it would open up more licenses in their, their district. One trick with the district allocation is we're going through redistricting now. And so, for example, if Mission Valley is growing. And they say we, we need to, we need to re-divide the district so they're equal by population. And they stick part of Mission Valley in our district. Or God forbid, we get cut out and put in a district that doesn't have very many licenses. It would open up, uh, you know, a ton of possibilities for people to add new SDRs. So it, it, it's not the best way to do it, but it, it came from Planning Commission, so I think that speaks pretty strongly. And based on my count, this would actually result in reductions in the coastal areas with or without a Mission Beach carve out. The current draft from Campbell's office that just does a citywide percentage cap. Would accommodate all of the existing uh, full-time operators and. They're not telling you that because they want to pretend that they're giving some concession on, on this. But the fact is, no one from the city, uh, no one from DSD, no one from Campbell's office has made any effort to. Identify the existing count. So when they say they're reducing them, they, they don't know what they're talking about.
So it looks like, uh, you know, numbers, uh, what, six? Obviously, that's um. Speaks for itself, right? Um. And uh, number five, number five, obviously, if you sign a covenant. Uh, to, to build an ADU. And uh, you shouldn't be able to then Airbnb it if, if, uh, if you've, you've got a density bonus or you got a diff fee waived.
I think, so right now, if I build a companion unit, which actually I'm in the permit process for. I'm expressly prohibited from renting that under thirty days. However, by state law, I could build a two thousand square foot companion unit, three stories high in my backyard. Next to my eight hundred square foot house. And then I can move into it and I can list my house as an STR, right? So six of one half dozen the others. So this, the, the idea of this, I think in the committee was that. If the property or the lot or however you want to characterize it, if, if any, if that in any way, shape or form has some density bonus or, or incentive. Then you can't allow uh, STRs on that particular lot, because you know, you're, you're giving them freebies and waiving permit fees. And it's not going to actually create housing, right? So that was the idea here.
Another loophole we talked about was this um, duplexes or, you know, properties, they should be in the tier two, uh, tier, uh, tier three, not tier two. Uh, because effectively, that's just a, just a big fat loophole that wasn't, that wasn't uh, addressed. Meaning that an owner could, um, you know, you, you're supposed to have one unit. Um, an onsite owner in that tier that can run on one unit. Um, and not both units, so um, a, a, a duplexes and housing unit, it didn't identify it as that in, in the ordinance as it was written. So we clarified that in this. Number six.
Yeah, the, when Bree was pushing this to council for the primary resi- primary, the host must be a primary resident on site. The idea was that. You know, hey, it's still housing, but if we have to allow it somewhere, let's allow it in these type of situations. Because the person can kind of police their own unit. Um, so I think that's generally where that desire came from, but it, yeah, it's still housing. And we're. Taking that away, so I, I, I think it should be subject to the cap. If, if the purpose of the cap is to, is to preserve housing, then. Let's uh, use it as such.
So did we address Andrea's uh, at, at her point up there, right? So. We got hers in.
I'm not sure how to, I guess that could be down here as a number ten, it's sort of a separate. Thing.
Could, and could you scroll down to number ten as well? Oh, you don't have it yet.
No, there is no more number ten. I, I renumbered these, the ones, and the ones below are the ones that were already incorporated. Um, or. I mean, number seven, I, I sort of replaced that with the uh, platform compliance.
We're going to have ten, we can carve it in stone and call it a commandment.
I'm not sure how to type this one, consider.
Are, are there any other suggestions or edits?
It might be difficult to imagine. What this list does without looking at the original MOA. But we hope that, you know, as we went through with the subcommittee, our, you know, of course, our intent was protect housing. And try to make it as fair as possible. I think, from my opinion, looking at this and having sat on it for several mo- several weeks, maybe a couple of months. Um, it, it makes sense to me. So I'll endorse it.
Uh, so are you seconding Kevin's motion? Because I assume this is obviously been presented as Kevin motioning it.
Um, yeah, as far, as far I can see, I, I would second this.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion on the motion?
What percentage should we be, I, I don't think we can really plug this in right now. I understand the goal is for it to be less than, you know, the percentage of housing increase. So I, I think someone's going to have to do a little research and plug that number in.
Or just let the council write their own ordinance, we're just making a recommendation, right? I mean, we could leave blanks in there and they can.
You can do, yeah, a fixed percentage and let them.
Well, then they'll make a larger percentage that is exceeding the housing increase.
I'm going to do it anyway.
I'm going to say a modest fixed percentage.
Need to define that. I, I don't think you can leave it that way. I mean, I support the effort, but I, I think there has to be defined.
Is it possible to define that after the vote with the understanding that it will be? Um, conservatively less than the uh, trend in increased housing units? I don't know. I mean, I don't know if that number is going to be one percent or.
I think we should delete number ten entirely.
I don't really like it that much, to be honest.
Why are you approving an increase in this when you're trying to decrease it already?
I say, um, I will refuse number ten as a friendly amendment if, if people want to vote on adding it in.
Let the city council decide on the increase, that's their job.
How do you want to, how do you want to do the vote on this, Andrea? So I, I guess I moved this entire thing with the exception of ten. Uh, incorporated some friendly amendments. Um, Anthony seconded that. Um, or I mean, do you want to pick apart parts of this?
Yeah, you can just take ten out in the essence of time because we are running over. Um, take it out and it has been motioned and seconded as is right now. Um, so this is what we would be voting on.
Thank you.
I'm going to say list all. Do you guys have a objection to the uh, language at the very top? Is there anything in there you want to? Fall on the sword for?
I think it's um, just time to call the vote, Tracy.
I'd like to see if you could um, reiterate the points you made in the opening paragraph as a closure to the document.
Thank you, Virginia.
Will they read that far? Um, I mean, if there's some succinct thing to end it with, I'm, I'm open ears on that.
Well, right now, this is just the motion. It's not really the letter. I mean. You know, it's kind of, kind of up to Andrea to put the, the finishing touches on the letter.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fair if she wants to editorialize within the scope of the boards.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think after uh, pu- putting so much. Uh, care into these suggestions, we, we don't want to leave them with the impression that we condone this whole thing.
Well, and that's the thing, the first paragraph is, is essentially the beginning of a letter. I mean, it's, it, you know, you're, you're, you're saying right now, you're starting a letter and you're telling them how disappointed they are. You know, it's not really, it's not really a motion, it's just the beginning of a letter. So, you know. I'm not even sure that first paragraph is necessary and we can't just let Andrea write what she wants.
Well, that seems sort of non-transparent, doesn't it?
There's the matter me write what I want.
You're welcome to add something if you can. Spit it out real quick.
No, it's difficult to be diplomatic about this.
Okay, Mike, what, what are we voting on? Are we voting on the entire thing or are we voting on just the motion itself, which is like in response to the draft ordinance?
No, Tracy, the motion is this um, this entire document.
The entire document?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so am I calling?
Please do the roll call vote.
Okay, thank you. Um, Anthony?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Craig? Craig?
Yes, and that's yes to this going, this being our response, right? With all these points, yes.
Yes, Chris?
Saying on a nitpicky detail, number one, last sentence, it can change STR to STVR there, but yes for the vote.
George?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Jenna?
Did you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So I can hear somebody typing. Uh, Kevin? Yes.
Man, I, I don't know.
Kevin's going to approve his own motion. Nicole?
I don't want to, but yes.
Yes, and my thanks to the subcommittee for tackling this issue, which is really such a threat to our community. Thank you, Kevin and Anthony, uninvolved.
Newman? You still hearing Newman? I can't, I can't see Newman's here, so. Is he still here?
He's saying yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Richard? Richard?
Richard says yes, and thank you all for ta- tackling this very difficult issue.
Tom?
Yes.
Virginia?
And I would say. I would, I, yeah, I approve it, but as a way of pointing out how flawed the proposed. Uh, draft ordinance is, not that I approve of, of any of these things in my community, but I, I think it's a. You've done a wonderful job of pointing out how, how the other one is lacking.
And I vote yes.
How to make it less bad?
Motion approved. Kevin, when you get that all written up, can you forward it to me so that I can have?
Yeah, and just uh, unshare your screen.
Also, Kevin, now that you can't use your new ADU for a short-term vacation rental, what are you going to do with your signed, the sign you ordered Pastings Hotel? What are you going to do with that now?
Oh, I'm, I'm going to do a copper smelting plant there. Um, I didn't see it expressly written in the code, so.
I know you've been working on that idea for a while too, so.
Okay, so now, um, another fun topic that we're revisiting is CPG reforms. I, I think about it probably a year, year and a half ago, even longer. That we first reviewed these, um, and I sent out the city memo, so the important parts of the memo of the city attorney's memo were the red parts. Uh, it does seem like a lot of our concerns were taken out and not included. I would say the final two things that uh, we, that this board voted or mentioned as concerns that are still there. Are the demographic collection, although they've changed it to be completely voluntary. Uh, and anonymous for all board members, so that, you know, makes it a little bit better and. Um, actually resolves the purpose to monitor diversity. The one problem I had with the city attorney's memo and recommendations uh, was the. The clause that each CPG should create their own policy for training. The board members, I obviously think the city should be creating the policy and training for the board members. Uh, since we, you know, our advisory boards to the city council. That would be my one recommendation or motion for change or um. Of rec- amendments to what the city attorney's memo said. Does anyone else have anything that they were concerned about with CPG reform, Virginia?
I, I'm a little concerned about the three month uh, window of uh. Opportunity for them to shut a, a planning board down if they can't reach a quorum.
Okay.
It seems like they should allow more time for them.
Do you have a number or just a longer time period?
Um.
Or maybe not shut down, maybe just put on. Be reached out to by the city to help recruit and. Get more people on the board.
Yeah, maybe put on hiatus or something, but.
Right.
Since they're not able to recommend anything anyway, until they have a quorum. There's no reason to stop recognizing the group.
Okay.
I think I had something about thirteen B, but um, I'm reading my notes here. Uh. Don't know. Because it said thirteen B, section two wasn't included. Something about not requiring attendance at more than one meeting in the previous twelve months?
Yeah.
I think that's already our rule.
That's true, but there are some planning.
Two, yeah, there's some that say multiple meetings and. I can't remember where I saw that. I think it was in the red. Let's see if I can find it in the red section here. Um. It was like. Yeah, it was, was weird. It was like something we don't, we don't do, they were. Twenty.
It is thirteen B, um, under section D.
Yeah, why am I not finding it?
It is on page four of ten.
Three and four, yeah, so, um, but should not require attendance at more than one meeting in the previous twelve months. So that's in our bylaws, but it's not in others. Um, so I just wanted to point that out. I actually thought that that was good and I, I don't, I mean, there's, there's a. there's something to be said for attending more than one meeting so that you know what these boards are about and the kinds of things that we discuss. But I think that, you know, the requirement of more than one meeting is, is a lot, especially for some of these small boards that have a really tough time recruiting people in the first place. You know, so I would agree with the change there. But I think that was the only thing that I saw that was like weird. Yeah.
I didn't understand your comment, Andrea, about the, the change to, I'll forget what it was now. I, I didn't see that in there. Which numbers?
It is under section three, terms and conditions for recognized C P G, um, subsection E. Recognized C P G's must develop a policy detailing the training requirements of all C P G voting members to complete the community orientation COW workshop or E COW, which is offered online each year and each time they are elected, blah, blah, blah. Um, again, I don't think it should be, it, it should fall onto the C P G's. I think it should be a standard policy, uh, from the city about our required training. And they should, uh, hold, I think they should hold us all accountable to a certain level of training if you're serving on a C P G.
I, I agree with that. So this, this is actually lessening the requirements potentially if a board decides to.
Um, I, I, oh, I think COW is going to be mandatory no matter what. Obviously, I, I would just like the city to set a standard requirement so that all C P G's are operating at, uh, the same level.
I agree, I agree with that 100%. The way they've written it is really weird. Yeah.
And I also just want to decrease, you know, our burden. Again, we are all, you know, volunteers. Uh, so coming up with all this extra stuff and, you know, and they hardly give us any money, uh, from the city as well, uh, to do everything that we do. So, uh, I think just making it more burdensome to serve on a C P G, uh, will just, you know, decrease the likelihood that people continue to seek it out.
I think if the city wants to encourage more, uh, participation in C P G's, then they should, um, not bypass us on important issues.
Right.
We've had members quit because they felt that they weren't being heard and it wasn't a good use of their time. Experienced members, and that's, that's very sad.
Yeah. Okay, so that one, and then, um, Virginia made a good point. Sorry, I, I just want to make sure where it was, the planning.
It's nineteen B. I'm just reading that one right now, nineteen B. Uh, page 10 of 10.
Oh, if the C P G is unable to meet quorum, right. Okay, yeah, and then.
So they're not saying that the, they're not saying in that one that the, the C P G is dissolved after three months. They're basically saying if you go three months without quorum, the city may provide assistance to the community, place it in temporary inactive status. And then it says if can't meet quorum for six consecutive months, then it could recommend that the C P G recognition be revoked. So it's not saying that they're going to shut us down after three months. They're just.
I would change may to will. Then. Like they will help.
Yeah.
Instead of may.
Yeah. Is there, but I'm curious what kind of assistance they're going to give.
I mean, they don't even usually attend the meetings, but I, I think there is a planner present, uh, today.
Yeah, our planner Lisa's here.
Great.
That was going to be my comment. I, I acknowledged it at the top of the meeting, uh, with the comments to Mayor Gloria, but, um, twelve A is the one that stood out to me. Um, I know we had some discussion about this, but if I'm, if I'm reading the language and the response by the attorney's office, I dispute it. I think the policy would be the right place to have a requirement that a planner is in front of us in these meetings when there's an item of, of interest, um, along the lines of their expertise. Um, I'm really happy to see our planner here tonight, and I, I think that's been a trend that's been occurring for the last, you know, couple of meetings. And so, um, I think policy is an appropriate place to, to spell that out.
Okay.
A quorum, uh, que- quorum issue, is it written to put a, a planning board, uh, under the microscope if they can't make quorum? Or if they fall below, uh, membership or both? Cause I mean, if the minimum membership's 12, you know, can you operate with seven people and five vacancies?
If you have a certain level of vacancies, because this was the situation we were in.
Couple of years back.
Couple of years back. And the city was happy to work with us and give us the time it took and allow us to continue to hold meetings.
I, I would ask Lisa what, I mean, what she thinks on that. And then also I, I'm kind of curious what kind of assistance they're, they, they want to offer or what the, what that assistance actually entails. I mean, if, if she already knows.
Yeah.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
So I think the challenge is that this, um, was prepared by the city attorney's office, not the planning department.
So this is their official legal, so do you, um, legal analysis? So do you guys have, um, so what would be the system in place, uh, if a C P G did fail to reach quorum? Or, or what assistance is available?
Yeah, I agree that I don't think it's outlined in what you're reading.
So planning doesn't have?
A response or a equivalent level of what's been prepared by the city attorney's office? No.
Okay, and is there a plan to come out with that?
I'm not sure right now.
Okay.
I mean, this to me seems like the city attorney is sort of putting some limitations on, on the existing council policy. They're not really trying to rewrite it. So I don't know if we, is this an information item or a voting item?
No, it's an action item. Um, we will be talking about this at C P C, um, either next month or the month after. So I want to make sure that our board has a stance so I can represent it to planning groups.
Wally have something, I don't know, as regarding charter or something to that effect that he was very much advocating for? Do you recall?
Um, a charter.
Charter amendment.
Oh, for the city council policy? Um, I think, yeah, this is the first step, and I think this goes, uh, to the beginning of the memo. If you scroll up, uh, she, there's a couple of solutions, um, that we can either go back and change council policy 620 dash 24. Yeah, this is, this is their recommendation for how we can change council policy 600 dash 24, um, to make sure C P J, C P G's, uh, retain their, um, detached legal entities away from the city, uh, but still operate as official advisory boards without having to come up with a new amendment or anything like that. I don't know where, where Wally's head is, because we haven't had that full discussion. But this is the city attorney's, um, official analysis of how we can amend the policy to, uh, incorporate some of what the task force found.
Doesn't it seem unusual that the city attorney would develop a policy with not, without talking to the planning department? That's weird.
Yeah.
This started from a council committee, I think, run by, chaired by Scott Sherman and, uh, some other groups that have been, uh, not happy with planning boards and uh, groups of grouchy old white homeowners, uh, controlling, you know, places like La Jolla. Uh, that's my understanding of sort of the genesis of this effort.
Okay. Uh, what am I saying? So we just have, from what I'm hearing, those two change or two recommendations are what we would like to see. Did anyone else have anything they want to add or throw in there? Otherwise, I'm going to try to make a motion so we can move on to our final action item of the night.
What are, what are the two, um, things, Andrea?
So we have section E, part three, the terms of conditions, 23B, 25B, 26A. Um, the, each C P G will come up with their own training policy. And I would just prefer that the city develops, um, a standard training policy for all C P G's to implement. And then section D, nineteen B, uh, would be change may to will.
I mean, I would, a- again, I think 12A should be included. It's in the notes, it's saying it was not included in this draft, but I don't understand the reasoning behind that.
12A, it's not under B, rules of parliamentary procedure, the city encourages, oh, the, that, um, someone from the city rep, that is city representative, okay. Encourages C P G's. Okay. Do, do, what is that? Section? B, 11B, 12A.
Mention, I'm going to advocate that we go to some effort to have sort of an orientation meeting, um, you know, after, after elections for the sake of new members. Um, and, you know, and discuss things like Roberts rules, uh, council policy. I don't think the workshops really cover even the tip of the iceberg on that stuff, and it's unfortunate. Um, I, I would think that'd be a good idea, and I think the only way to really do it is actually in a agendized meeting.
Think that's a great suggestion, Kevin. As a new member to the board myself, I think I would have, uh, probably benefited a lot from some sort of onboarding, uh, informational session. So I would, I'd like to support that idea going forward.
Great, sorry, I'm just trying to write down Chris's suggestion. I'm asking for recommendations for city. Okay. Um, let me try my hand at this motion. Okay, the ocean beach planning board moves to, moves to accept the city attorney's memo on C P G reforms with three, uh, minor revisions. And section E, part three, 23B, 25B, and 26A, um, should be changed to, the city will implement, um, a minimum or a, a, a level of training required for all C P G's and keep that continuous. Uh, and section D, nineteen B, change, the city may provide assistance to the planning group, to the city will provide assistance to the planning group. And then I have section B, 11B, 12E. Add that city staff should be present at C P G meetings, uh, when items they are asking for items that they're, for items that are agendized that have been asked for, um, recommendations from the planning board to inform decision-making.
Which need?
If it's helpful, you could borrow maybe some of the language from attachment C. It basically says, um, uh, you know, planning staff should be there, uh, when a discretionary land use item is before the C P G.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, oops, should be present at meetings when a shit, a discretionary. Discretionary, what was that?
Land use item is before the C P G.
Isn't every coastal permit a discretionary use item?
Sure.
We don't, yeah, but we don't review projects every meeting. And I think it would be helpful if we did have planners, uh, because, you know, a lot of times we do have direct questions about, and we, we, uh, about certain things and, you know, we have pointed out things that are wrong. Uh, so it would, as opposed to just writing a memo and attaching it to, uh, form 620, it would be easier to just have that discussion with the city staff in real time.
I mean, the effort for me personally is just a better collaboration, right? So it isn't those starts and stops and, and turn around and circle back. And, um, that way everyone can be in the room and have the conversation at the same time. It's just, it's just more efficient.
Yeah.
I think on long-term planning stuff or, you know, rezoning or municipal code things, that makes sense to me. But projects themselves, these coastal projects, the majority of them are, they're essentially, um, ministerial, that, you know, like that one that, uh, we did on the consent agenda. It's not really a planning matter unless it's some big deal, like something right on the edge of the coast or something.
I mean, we could absolutely amend it so that anything that's on the consent agenda would not require planners' attendance. That, that's completely fair, I think. Um, but to your point, Kevin, I mean, maybe there's a modification that a planner should be present at the project review committee meetings. Then those are when those issues are identified, right? Instead of coming in front of the full board. I mean, that, that works for me as well.
They'll probably interpret land use as, as larger scope items, so I, I'm okay with that language.
So, did everybody get a chance to look at the motion? I'm not sure I got it all. The numbers and stuff.
Tracy for typing that while I was.
It's okay. Let me know if there's anything that's wrong. I wasn't sure I got the numbers right.
Yeah, it's 23 and 25B and 26A for your note.
So with E three, 23 and 25B?
It's three E, so it's section three, part E.
Okay. And then what?
Um, yeah, it's three E, 23B, 25B, and then you had 26A, right? Let me see, where is section?
Three E, 23B, 25B, and 26A.
Yes, and then, um, for the section D, it's, um, that's eight D.
Eight D.
Yeah, eight D.
And then nineteen B?
Nineteen B.
Okay. And then the last one is?
It's all the way at the beginning, but it's.
Eleven B or something?
It's 11B, 12A, section, um, under part two. So it's two, section B, part two, section B.
Two. Section B. Okay, one more time.
All right. Awesome.
All right, let me know.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, that was my motion, and then we need a second and a vote. Or not, if you guys hate my motion.
I'll second, I'll second it. Let me just make a quick note that that's what this is, item three on our agenda. Okay.
Thanks again for, you know, thanks.
Call the vote, Anthony?
Yes.
Andrea?
Uh, yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Yes.
Christopher. George.
Yes.
Jane.
No.
Jenna.
Yes.
Kevin.
Kevin's a yes.
Nicole.
Yes.
Newman. Richard.
Richard, yes.
Tom.
Yes.
I vote yes, Virginia. I wasn't sure, are you trying to unmute? Would you, Virginia, what'd you vote? Yes, thumbs up means yes, all right, cool, thank you.
You're muted, Andrea.
Thank you, so last item is fraud street traffic calming measures. We previously discussed a four-way stop sign at Cape May and fraud, which we've gotten city response back from that there, you know, they just don't really, they don't see necessity for it based on accidents or traffic collisions. However, the transportation subcommittee does still feel that there should be some traffic calming along fraud. So we specifically picked out multiple intersections so we could, you know, have a better chance of hopefully finding one that would qualify for a stop sign. We picked the two intersections specifically, it was Saratoga. That is not the agenda. It was Saratoga and, do, 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 Brighton, because they, Saratoga, because it also has a four-way stop on Ebers. On. Oh goodness, I'm blinking, on Cable and Bacon, yeah, so it's a parallel grid structure system. So it all looks the same now that these are thorough fairs. And then Brighton, because Brighton is technically our bicycle boulevard that residents, people living in the residential neighborhood should come down Brighton. And we want to better establish that as a bicycle boulevard and make it, you know, safer. And we have, you know, so we get more, less people biking down Sunset Cliffs Avenue and more people actually using our bicycle boulevards. Because it's really annoying kind of when you encounter a cyclist on Sunset Cliffs. There's just not enough room for us all, so. That was the motion from the transportation committee. Kevin, was, is there any specific reason you wanted to pull this from consensus agenda? What are you worried about, concerns? I'll leave the floor open to you and to anyone else, comments or questions.
My, my main worry is. Asking too much on these kinds of issues. I think this is a stretch. I think fraud has traffic calming, it's called ditches at most of the intersections. I think Cape May is one of those dips. I think Cape May is probably the halfway point, so I do understand the concept of trying to break it up. You know, so there's some, some kind of stop between Voltaire and Newport. But it's just, there's not a lot of traffic on those streets. They're, they're really. I just don't see a need for it, and I, I think it's a stretch for the board to support this. You know, at least given the information we've been given.
So I'm gonna, so I'm gonna. Yes, there are dips on that road, and yes, some people believe that they are traffic calming, but they're not. I mean, people are flying down that road. And I attended the PCPB meeting, and they discussed this as well. And they actually did approve a letter for the location that the, that the neighbors were asking for. So their reasoning was, there was a couple of reasons. Number one is there are four-way stops on the parallel roads. And what has happened is people are avoiding those roads and they're going down Ebers. So what happens is when you put stop signs everywhere, you end up with a pinball effect, right? So people are going down Ebers now to avoid the stop signs on the other roads, which is making it more crowded. So the people who asked for this, this stop sign, I don't, I mean, there's just, they were picking that intersection. But I think their main concern is that they don't have a safe place to cross the street anywhere until you get to Newport. And, you know, unfortunately, because of the pinball effect, you're having all of these people choosing to go down Ebers or Frued, I don't, which one is it? It's the, what's, what's the one that they're? Okay, fraud, okay. So people are going down fraud, and, you know, they're, they're flying over the dips, there's more traffic there. And they don't feel like there's a safe place to cross. So we, instead of just saying, okay, well, you know, we're going to pick that one particular intersection, we're giving the city a couple more options in addition to the PCPB recommendation. So now the city can have three different choices, and they can pick the one that would most benefit that area. So I don't know if anybody read the letter from PCPB, but on the, on that letter, there were actually some community members who wrote in and made public comment for it requesting that. And they were basically saying, look, our street is not safe. There are a lot of cars that are flying down this road now. And, you know, yeah, unfortunately, you know, the two parallel streets have, have gotten stop signs. And that's creating a pinball effect, and people are going down Ebers. And if it's just the Uber drivers that are going down Ebers to save a minute or two to get to their next fare, then that's still additional people using Ebers as a through fare. So that's why we decided to go ahead and say, look, we're just going to add, we're just going to give some options to the city and say, these are what we think would be the best solutions, and, you know, we'd like you to evaluate. So that's, I don't know if Mandy has anything to say, she's, she's on board, or so she might have something to say.
Tracy, can I just chime in real quick, because I was getting a little confused. But what we're talking about here is a stop sign on fraud street, not on Ebers, which is one block down from fraud, is that right? Because in my estimation, everybody takes Eber Street out of town. Don't tell the non-locals that, but everyone's driving on Eber Street. And so there are a lot of stop signs on that street to break up traffic. I don't think that a lot of people are taking fraud out of town. Just because that's a very like hilly road, you have to drive up the hill to get there. And then there's more hills and dips and things. But if the residents of fraud street are asking for a stop sign because they don't feel safe, then the city should, in effect, I think, listen to those residents. And, you know, grant their request for safer streets. One thing, though, that they might not understand is that putting in a stop sign on a street with heavy traffic is going to increase the traffic noise. So if these people are wanting a, you know, a stop sign right in front of their house, that is something that they might want to think about as well, because you have the cars coming to a stop and accelerating out of the stop. That's always fun for neighborhood noise, you know.
I'll point, I'll point out that a lot of people who don't live in the OB planning board jurisdiction, but who live farther up the hill. Guzzo and up the hill will choose to use fraud rather than Ebers because Guzzo's got the dog leg where it dead ends at Del Monte. And so. Fraud, fraud actually is getting a fair bit of use from people who are up the hill, you know, Point Loma Heights area.
Yeah.
If they're, if they're heading out of town.
Yeah, I echo that when I, as a former hill person, as I call them, when I was living between Ebers and fraud, I often, I mostly took fraud out, because that's just the way, because I park in front of my house and my car was facing that way. I was mostly taking fraud out, and this is also why we specifically asked for traffic studies. And we're not recommending, you know, any specific stop sign go in. We just want to draw the city's attention to the street, that it is getting more traffic and that it's being used more and more as a thoroughfare. And so traffic calming measures should be looked at and evaluated for. So it's, again, nothing set in stone, we just wanted to give them multiple options so we could start having that evaluated and make sure that, you know, no one gets hurt anymore. Especially, you know, I had a friend who was recently hit while she was crossing the street too. So when you have these long stretches of road without any stop sign, it's really easy to start speeding without even knowing it. And part of vision zero, of course, would, was, you know, making sure no one dies. Jane, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, fraud is the borderline between Peninsula and Ocean Beach. And I think if we're going to do any calming, we should consult with the Peninsula Planning Board.
They already did.
And what did? Yeah, we already approved. We already approved a motion to, our motion was to install a four-legged stop sign at fraud and Cape May. And then just to look at traffic calming measures along fraud street between Voltaire and Newport, because there are no stop signs in that point four-four mile stretch. And people are using it as a throughput in and out of the community.
Yeah, and surprisingly, they approved it. And there was a great amount of discussion on that. And typically, they would not approve stop signs, but they were, they brought up the safe, safe passages to schools, because there's, you know, there's a church or something close by that has schooling. You know, I mean, this is, this is a whole large stretch of road that doesn't have a stop sign for people to stop so people can cross the street, you know? And, I mean, we've put in stop signs around schools before. Now, I do want to say that during that discussion, Jeff Page was making comments about the dips in the road and how those are traffic calming. But then I was also speaking to some other people, and they said that they fly right over those dips, and they don't really slow them down at all, so.
I think it's only traffic calming for people in low riders.
Yeah.
So, so I, I live off fraud, this is my district, and I can tell you affirmatively from feedback from neighbors, there's no question that traffic, traffic is increasing on this street. People that lived here longer than me have, have told me specific stories and accidents, you know, everyone's got a story, it seems like. So I strongly support this, and I appreciate the reference to the prior conversation we had about this, which was to recommend a traffic study be done before we identify ourselves where the stop sign should be placed. I think that's still the appropriate way to go. And, and, and putting forth some suggestions like Brighton and Saratoga. I don't think that's harmful either, because it's sort of a, a starting point for then that traffic study to be conducted. And if we think there are more appropriate areas to put a stop sign in this stretch of fraud, I think that's the right approach to, to take. In terms of the, the increased traffic noise, most of these streets already have stop signs when you're running east to west, right? So if you pull in an intersection, you're already, you have that start-stop noise as it exists. So adding another stop sign in one or two points in this stretch of the road, I, I don't think noise would be, you know, much of an added effect. So, so I support the effort here to, to move forward the traffic study and, and put some signs on this street.
So the motion, go ahead, Jane, I mean, I'll find the, just to type it.
I'm down to fifteen percent, so.
Let's move this along, if I may.
Let's move it along, okay, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna find the motion real quick and then type it in.
Thank you, Tracy.
The, the other issue is, the other issue is the language needs cleaning up at item three, because it's not Saratoga Street, it's Saratoga Avenue. And it's, and it wouldn't hurt, and it wouldn't hurt to put fraud back in again. To put fraud street back in again, so you're actually pointing out the correct intersections. That's all.
Nice, appreciate those comments.
I can't get my browser to open up our, our website, so can somebody grab the agenda and just? Don't have it. WordPress has been kind of irritating me lately, it's really, really slow. On all levels.
I think the residents that are unhappy about the crossing. Issues should advocate, they can ask the city to evaluate the visibility at the intersections, and they can extend the red curbs so that they have more visibility when stepping out from the parked cars blocking the view. They did that on, on my intersection, and it made a huge difference for crossing safely without adding a stop sign.
Andrea, do you have that agenda right in front of you?
Yes, copying and pasting it and tightening up the language per Tom's suggestions.
Okay, because I, my computer just decided to not want to pull up the Ocean Beach.
Noticed that, and it was giving me a really hard time last week with the town councils meeting, and I was trying to look up some stuff, and, yeah, they have WordPress too, so.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not loving it lately.
I'm warning everybody, I'm not sure how long we have left, but I'm not sure how long, yeah, if WebEx will allow us to go past nine.
Okay, so we just have, we have that motion and then. And then we'll be good to go. I finally got the stupid thing to open. Okay, Andrea typed in the motion.
Yeah, after this item, I, I only have one chair update, so that should.
What's the end here? It says along Frued at?
Oh, it was supposed to be street, fraud street.
Oh, okay. I, I just, I always say food.
No, I know, it's, it's technically his real name and how you pronounce it, but, you know.
Let's vote on that.
Okay, so, to increase traffic calming measures along Frued Street and to establish a bicycle network of safe routes to schools, schools. We request that the city complete a traffic and feasibility study of installing a four-way stop at Brighton Avenue and/or Saratoga Avenue. Along fraud, Frued Street. Here, I'll just clean that up, there we go. What the hell, okay, why is it breaking it into that other line? That's weird. Anybody have any comments?
Or a second? Or you, did you make this motion, Tracy?
I, I mean, we, I, sure, I made this motion.
And then Andrew put his, oh.
Who's going to second?
Andrew or Jane? Fight, fight, no, I'm just kidding.
I'm gonna take Andrew, because, because I just am, okay. Okay, I'm gonna call a roll, Anthony.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Craig. Craig. I cannot see Craig.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Chris.
Yes, yes.
George.
George says yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Jenna.
Yes.
Kevin.
No.
Nicole.
Yes.
Thank you, Newman. I saw your lips move, they said yes, right, okay. Richard.
Negative.
Tom.
Yes.
I say yes, Virginia.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Awesome, thanks, guys. So the only thing I have for the chair update is that, and Teddy confirmed this with me today, is that the short-term vacation rental ordinance will be doctored on the twenty-third of this month. So mark your calendar, tell everyone you know, let's all call in and make a huge kerfuffle and fuss about demanding all the things we want. So February twenty-third, city council will be hearing the short-term vacation ordinance put on your calendars. And that, that is all I have for the chair updates. Do we have any other, Kevin and?
Pressures report.
And pressure report as well.
Dates from.
Go for it, Craig.
What you got, Craig?
Pressures report, one thousand three hundred and forty-six and nineteen cents. And Andrea, are we going to explore perhaps renting a smaller P O box at the business center at this time? And Andrea, are we gonna explore um perhaps renting a smaller P O box at the business center at this time?
Yes, I do think we should explore that. Um, that is something I did not ask Lisa while she was here. But I am gonna follow up as well, um whether we can do entirely.
Did you hear that?
Yes, please do explore that possibility while I continue to follow up and see if we can get rid of our physical address entirely. But I guess it does, yeah, it does serve a purpose for elections each year. So. Thank you, Craig. Yes, smaller box would be good.
I got, I got nothing. Kevin, did you have something, Kevin? He said.
Anything from NACAC? No, Andrew, anything from the arts district?
Uh yeah, happy to make a quick shameless plug. We are hosting a live arts and culture event Friday night from four to eight. I'll post the link here. I hope everybody can join me. I'll be emceeing live, so be kind uh and have fun.
Thanks, yeah, it's Fridays, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I've got a, a quick arts update too for the, the team. Um, twenty thousand dollar uh mentorship opportunity at the airport for emerging artists, uh super cool. Uh opportunity hasn't been done at the airport. Very few institutions are doing uh mentorship like this. Um, we are about to hire a, a very um prominent uh artist to work on a large-scale public art installation at the airport, hopefully if, if it moves forward with the board this week. Um and with that, uh great opportunity for an emerging artist. There aren't a lot of these for folks who are trying to transition from gallery work or other visual art to the larger public art sphere, so um. It went live last week. I'm gonna throw it in the chat right now too. If you have any friends who are artists, this is a really, really cool opportunity for your gig. Twenty thousand bucks.
Thanks, yeah. Any other shameless plugs? Okay, thanks guys. As always, um great conversation. Again, thanks um for, for all your help. And um if you do know anyone who wants to run uh for the board seats, we do obviously have a few vacancies. We're gonna have a few vacancies, so please get them interested. Let them know there's, you know, no signature requirement. Um, yeah, my crack.
I'll go ahead and update the, I'll go ahead and update the website with our official no signature kind of rules and stuff for this year. So um that'll be all on our slow, wet WordPress soon.
Fantastic, okay. Thank you all. Stay safe out there. Um have a great weekend.
Later.